All right, but we're going to reconvene to an open session from our earlier adjourned meeting. Close session announced and open session from our city attorney Quinn Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, the city council went into two closed sessions concerning the two items identified on the agenda. The city council gave direction on both items. There was no other reportable action taken.
Thank you. With that, we're adjuring that meeting. We're going to roll out into our city council regular meeting for Wednesday, July 5, 2023, at 6:00 PM. With that, we're going to pledge the flag, and I get to pick someone who I'm not picked on. Hey, how about our former principal Dale Keldrock? Dale can do it.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
We'll stand, please. Put your hands over your heart. Ready? Begin.
(audience cheering) To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. For those who don't know who Dale is, our former principal of Penny Camp, and I was a new rookie in 2005, he was kind enough to show me the ropes around Penny Camp as a city council rep. So, thank you, Dale, for doing that. We'll give you a city pin after it's all over.
(laughing).
Let's see, roll call, please, Lisa. After roll call?
Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
I am here as well. Folks, something we started, um, on March, Joe, maybe February?
Mm-hmm.
We started doing something where I like to recognize all veterans, current active-duty military personnel, and current military reservists. Would you all please stand up and be recognized? I know Rachel T. Johnson's one, there's a second and a third. Thank you all for being here. You want to, Robbie, do this? One of those who make a proposal for us to be here tonight, and thank you.
Reporting in progress.
Thank you. I missed all that. All right. We're in no ceremonial calendar. We're going to move to approval of agenda and a waiver of full reading of ordinances. Council Napolitano?
Yes, Your Honor. I plan to pull items four, five, and nine from the consent calendar.
Five and nine. Okay. Anyone else? Any other motion for approval? Move by Councilmember Howard, second member Pro Tem Franklin. No comments. Roll call, please. Thank you. Next items, item F, city council community and organization announcements of upcoming events. One minute and length. Community announcements, one minute length.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray, and I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I like to invite parents and caregivers with babies to summer songs and stories on Tuesday, July 11, from 10:15 to 10:45 AM at Manhattan Beach Library. Join us for a special summer storytime series for babies and toddlers ages zero to three with a parent or caregiver. We will sing, read stories, and practice rhymes and finger plays in this limited-time summer series. And on Tuesday, July 18, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM, teens are invited to participate in a sushi-making demonstration at Manhattan Beach Library. Teens will learn how to make sushi from Chef Andy Metzuda of the Sushi Chef Institute. He will demonstrate the art of making sushi and other Japanese cuisine, and rumor is, samples will be provided.
Ooh.
And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh. Well done. We appreciate the library. Our next speaker?
Hello, I'm Daniel Greenberg, and I'm the new student rep for the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm here today to announce the opening of the Manhattan Beach Parks Photography Contest to celebrate National Parks and Rec Month. We designed this to be a friendly, low-stakes way for Manhattan Beach Park users to share their photos and highlight their favorite things about the Manhattan Beach Parks. Anyone can participate. Submissions are fast, easy, and free of charge, and all photos of whatever quality are eligible, as long as they are taken in one of the parks or parquettes in our beautiful city. It doesn't matter if you take the photo with a fancy camera, a tablet, or a phone. We're just encouraging everyone to get out into our parks and share some photos that capture what they love most about these vital parts of our community. Submissions are open from now until the end of the month, and the page to submit can be found at manhattanbeach.gov photograph contest. Contestants are also encouraged to share their photos on social media with the hashtag #MBParksPhotos. Since this is the first time we're doing this, we'd welcome your help spreading the word to any friends or neighbors you know who enjoy our parks or enjoy taking photos. Thank you.
Well done. Terry Dabby said hello.
All right.
Our next speaker?
All right, I'll go. Hello, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Allen Stewart. I'm the cultural arts manager, and I'm here to both invite you to continue attending our concerts in the park and also let you know how well it went last weekend. We kicked off the season with the satin dolls and our salute to the troops concert. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, for introducing us. I loved the suit. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there that day, but loved the suit and the pictures. Really fantastic. We had a picture, but we might not be able to see it. No worries. We once again had a wonderful crowd. For next week, we will have So Rad, which is a really, really fun kind of dancing, popping 90s revival band. So, if you are roughly my age, then you might have, might recognize these songs. We'll have an 80s band and a 60s band later on, so we'll start with the 90s. On the screen in front of you is the lineup for the rest of the season. The concerts are from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Unlike what the beach reporter reported, we do not go till 9:00. We do go from 5:00 to 7:00 every Sunday, starting last Sunday, and for the next, well, now nine Sundays following. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery and members of the city council. My name is Gil Gao Bo. I'm principal engineer for the Public Works Department, and I'm here tonight to announce a couple of display events where Mayor Pro Tem Franklin and Councilmember Howard will be on site with mockups of the local business directories. So, as part of our Wayfinding project, the existing business directories in the downtown Manhattan Beach will be updated, and new business directories will be added to North Manhattan Beach. The community is invited to two in-person events to see the mockups of the proposed business directories and give their feedback. Councilmember Amy Howard will be at the first event on Tuesday, July 11, at the Manhattan Beach Farmer's Market from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin will be at the second event on Saturday, July 15, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the north Manhattan Beach area near the intersection of Highland Avenue and Rosecrans Avenue. To learn more about the project and get more information about these in-person events or to leave your feedback, please visit www.manhattenbeach.gov/wayfinding. Thank you.
Thank you all. Well done. Anyone else? Community announcements? Martha, anyone on Zoom? Community announcements?
(inaudible).
All right. We're going to move on to the public comments. These are three minutes in length, folks. Three minutes on the item "Not" on the council agenda. If you speak on it now, you cannot speak on it when it comes up to be addressed. Before I do, I want to talk about a couple items. The first one, the fact that, most of you know, we had an incident, two robberies, and the communication didn't get through to the council and the city manager. Most of you know my original comments about that. I'm not just embarrassed or frustrated and not happy about it. But before I did knee-jerk reaction to those things, I could sit down with people involved, our police chief, our city manager, one-on-one meetings. What happened? How to make it better going forward? And the chief just felt like I did, and there were things we needed to do better on. If anything happened out of this, I would say the fact that we get to look at other departments, like it's Beverly Hills, for one example, how to handle reporting up, up to all of us, not just the council, to the city manager and our residents. When the chief says she's also embarrassed about it and it won't happen again, I take her word for it. So, with that, city manager has his comments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you're right, we can always do better. To that end, we are looking at other departments' policies. We'll be coming back to the city council in the coming weeks to show you what we have suggested by way of additional policies, changes, and of course, is really focused at letting our residents know what's going on so that they can be aware, as well as the council. So, you know, we've already taken some steps in that direction, but we're going to finalize some draft policies to bring back to you, I should say, you know, modified policies, because there are some in existence already. But we will bring those back to you and have a robust discussion, and then set the expectation for the community as to what they will hear about. So, with that, I'd invite the chief to come down and have any other comments she'd like to add. But, yeah, we, we need to do better, and we will. It's my guarantee.
Chief? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the council. As your chief, I take my responsibility very seriously to, for public safety, that our community is kept safe. And I understand that part of that feeling of safety is feeling informed and feeling that you are an equal partner in the information we have regarding crimes that occur in our community. It's not enough for me to tell you that crime is down. You also need to feel that, and it can feel like there's not transparency when you don't know everything that you should know. And that is ultimately my responsibility. I am proud to say that through May, crime is down about 15% in Manhattan Beach. And so, while we have had a misstep in our communication, the things that we are doing, both internally and externally, working with the community and our internal policies, have resulted in a drop in crime year over year from 2022 to 2023. And I'll be working with the city manager on our policies moving forward and to see how we can be more upfront with the things that we are, this information that we're putting out, and also better ways to communicate to the community in a more quick manner, in a more efficient manner. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mayor, I know questions. We're good, chief. Thank you with that. Mayor's prerogative to announce three things that I did earlier. One, please some fire. You noticed this last week, it sounds like bombardment with the fireworks going on that we have here, and not in our city. Adjourning areas, please some fire. Chief, your teams, captain, fire chief, all of your teams, they've been busy running end to end. If you heard the ambulance firing, you're running. It's because they're running nonstop, Kevin, all the way through. Yes, it was an incident where a teenager was hurt on the, by the beach. You heard about it already, and there'll be more information. If anything comes out about it, we'll tell you more, but this shows the danger of fireworks and why we put illegal fireworks in Manhattan Beach completely. Fireworks are not legal in Manhattan Beach at all. We make it clear, the constant announcements, but this is one example of what happens. We don't do fireworks show here. There's never been a fireworks show in Manhattan Beach. We see what happens at these that are overrun that have fireworks shows. And I'm seeing anybody else in our residents downtown, especially don't want to see it. We're overwhelmed as enough as it is with certain events. We opt for fireworks in December. Our tradition here. So, that's where we continue that. With that noticed, I know I talked about the fact that we had this salute to the troops, and thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Franklin for stepping up there, and he's the only one of us that's got an active-duty son in the military, so he deservedly, he needed to be the, to welcome everybody there. But that's been 46 years, Director Lehman, concerts in the parks, salute to the troops as newer thing that we started. So, we do it right before July 4 to recognize, as we just said, all of our veterans, active military personnel, and those that helps us. That's why we do it, right before July 4. And the fact that we had the USO troop there and the satin dolls doing it, this is our way of showing appreciation for our veterans. I know it doesn't compare to other cities. What they do, this is Manhattan Beach. We do it differently here. And also as well, you saw the, instead of chief's idea, the, instead of coffee the cops, you started cone, ice cream cone with the cops and handles today. 200 cones in less than two hours, chief? That's pretty amazing. No, I did not take one, but I saw them being handed out while I was there. So, good idea. I think I'll stop there. I think, Joe. Lieutenant, council, any comments before I go on? You guys good?
You may want to address the pier lighting?
Oh, yes. Our pier lighting was set to go off at 12:01 Wednesday morning, I'm sorry, Tuesday morning, for July 4. The lights did go on. However, the sequence of red, white, blue did not go on. We found out about that, programming issue, and somehow Public Works Director Lee, I don't want to say anything about it, but I think we'll also, do you want to say anything about what, so much for technology when you program things in like a coffee maker? Does it start on time?
Because we were planning to do it.
We did plan it.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Yes, Public Works is responsible for this part of our business. To my knowledge, this is the first time that the programming of our holiday lights we've been doing for a couple of years did not go off as planned. It seems to be a technical issue because staff did verify it the day before. Going forward, the next time the lights will be changed will be Labor Day, and they'll be red, white, and blue on that holiday, starting at 12:01 that morning, and staff will be monitoring to make sure that does happen this time.
But I nominate Rep. Tem Franklin to go push the button, test it, make sure it works.
At 12:01.
12:01. Thank you. I know we all look forward to that. It's one thing that we did, but we'll set it, reset it itself. We'll have to go back to the old days of manual. We will. Anything else you guys have? All right, now I'll open up public comment. Three minutes in length. Everyone wants to come speak, please come down here and speak. And then item "Not" on the agenda.
It's my time, start.
You're good to go.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Montgomery, Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, and honorable council members. My name is Enzo Ames. I'm here to express my heartfelt thanks to the city and specifically to Mark Lehman, who is the head of Parks and Recs, and Mr. Shawn Roberts, the Public Works manager, for their support and encouragement in the completion of my Eagle Scout project, which was the revitalization of Sandown Park, back to its natural form without all of the invasive species. When I embarked on this journey last year, I had a vision of creating a vibrant and sustainable space in Manhattan Beach that would bring joy to our community and those who use our amazing public facilities and green spaces. My project includes the removal of over 1,500 invasive, highly invasive, non-native nightshade shrubs, which were destroying the natural habitat, which were then replaced with over 600 drought-tolerant, California-resistant plants, including but not limited to rusty sedge, Mexican sage, California poppy, and hummingbird sage. These plants provided a true, natural, and sustainable habitat for the bees and birds that are supposed to live in that area. This work took six months to plan, and after another three months to execute, it totaled to over 219 service hours by Manhattan Beach volunteers, mostly troops, scouts of Troop 849. Luckily, the city and the community was able to donate a total of $5,000 for this project. And at the conclusion of this project, we are roughly more, slightly over $600 extra, so I would like to donate this money to the city to the continued maintenance of this project.
Wow.
To the members of city council, thank you for giving importance to the environment, showing your care for our community, and for, and providing resources to make this a reality. Your commitment to our city's green spaces is remarkable, and together you have created a space where future generations can come together, connect with nature, and forge beautiful memories. Thank you for supporting scouts, for making my Eagle project a reality, and for enriching the lives of everyone who visits and attends Sandown Park. Thank you.
Well done, Enzo. Congratulations. Government, we only see a refund in government, so. Congratulations to you and Troop 849. I would say thanks to your mom, but your mom's here, but tell your dad we said hello to him, and thank you very much. Well done.
He's right there.
I'm seeing her. Great here. He's hiding behind the camera, but we see your dad. Well done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Wow, what a great start of the season when you get a refund, right?
Nice to have you come this way.
All right, next speaker.
Hi, Council, Mike McCowsky, 32-year resident. I wanted to speak to you all about public safety in light of the recent spate of armed robberies in town, but before I get to that, just a couple other things I wanted to weigh in on. I'm not a big fan of the new police cruiser logo. I believe it's item 16 on the agenda tonight. The new logo is more difficult to see in bad weather or bad lighting, whereas the old logo was larger, more visible, and imparted a certain, in my view, a certain gravitas to the vehicle itself and to the vehicle's law enforcement personnel, which is a good thing in my mind. I'm not sure the new muted logo has the same effect. The revised Neighborhood Watch Report. It used to be we'd get specific street and block locations for specific crimes each week, but now that detail only arrives once a month, and the rest of the week, the report leads it to the residents to interpret the crime map. So, I don't know that that's necessarily an improvement. I used to like the copy stat dashboard for its comparison of year-over-year crime stats. That's been eliminated as well. Certainly, the old report was in need of an overhaul, and the new report is a step, and a very good one, in the right direction, but the theme should be more timely information is better than less, which brings us to the actual crimes themselves, like the armed strand robberies. And now, we've had armed robberies in the past, but we usually received a NICSIL alert, I think it's called Now Alert South Bay. Always be NICSIL to me, but somewhere along the way, we stopped getting those, except when the police were searching for a suspect within a known area. In the case of the Father's Day strand robberies, Chief Johnson informed me that after the first robbery, her officers went looking for the suspects in undercover vehicles, so clearly they had some identifying information about them, their race, rough ages, maybe some other details, some physical appearance, clothing. Yet, she informed me that there were not enough, there was not enough actual information for the general public. I don't understand that. Her officers had information about what to look for, but the decision was made not to give that information to the public. How can having more eyeballs on the lookout for these three thugs have been a bad thing? Furthermore, by not informing the public, we all end up hearing about the crimes anyway on social media, except now the info is much less reliable, and people end up creating their own narratives anyway, and it only makes the situation worse. I believe accurate information about serious crimes should be shared effectively with the entire community, but not doing so in a timely and proactive manner, that does a disservice to the residents. In my view, for a situation like the strand robberies, there should have been a NICSIL alert after the first robbery, so there'd be more eyes on the lookout so the potential victims, like the second couple that was robbed just a few hours later, could have possibly been forewarned and, like, maybe not gone down into the strand at one in the morning. I would have done that if I'd gotten that warning. And also so the homeowners in the vicinity of the first robbery, at a time when we didn't know where the robbers were, could take, keep an eye out and be alerted to take precautions like locking their windows and doors. And even if the perps had been caught and arrested, there should have still been some sort of real-time announcement on social media like Twitter. Our PD department has a Twitter account, but rarely uses it. Beverly Hills, by contrast, uses theirs very effectively to provide real-time updates on significant police actions. And then I would follow up with a press release the next day, which I was happy to see actually happen regarding the third armed robbery last Friday.
Thank you, Mike. You're wrapping up?
It's my two cents. Thank you for my time. Thank you for the time.
You bring us up a good, brings up a good point here, folks. You just sign up for Alert South Bay. It's not automatic. You need to go to your phone, to your iPad, whatever you use, and sign up for Alert South Bay. They're excellent. You know when they come out what's going on. Our next speaker? Our next speaker? Come on. Don't be shy.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery, Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, city council members, and fellow residents. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council for your service in opening this forum to address crime in our community. My name is Joe Costa. I'm a 27-year resident of Manhattan Beach and a victim of catalytic converter theft last year. I'm here today to discuss chronic thefts of catalytic converters in our community. I understand you'll be discussing more serious crime later tonight, but all crime, including property crime, negatively affects the quality of life and costs residents' time and money. I believe we can do more in Manhattan Beach to deter and possibly prevent the theft of catalytic converters. I'd like to be a part of the solution and not just point out the problem. I recently attended the catalytic converter engraving "Free Service" at Cadecta on Rosecrans, and I was surprised to see the lack of public notification on-site regarding catalytic converter thefts. During and after this session, I spoke to several members of the Manhattan Beach Police Department regarding the type of theft, the theft prevention tips, and crime mitigation. After several years of assessing catalytic converter thefts in LA County and surrounding counties, catalytic converter theft still thrives in the South Bay area and local communities. Current public notifications in our community are insufficient in describing the frequency and the seriousness of this crime and the actions of local authorities. I would like to offer my assistance as an aviation analyst and a metallurgist in cooperation with the Manhattan Beach Police Department and city council in creating more robust public service announcements and make suggestions to prevent this crime. I have already submitted my suggestions to several members of the Manhattan Beach Police Department, and I'd like to offer these practical suggestions to the council members today. In conclusion, I request to work with a city council member creating a more robust public service announcements and make recommendations to Manhattan Beach City Council regarding mitigation actions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Before you leave, why don't you hand yourself to the chief, that we can have one-on-one conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Rep. Tem Franklin has his hand raised already for the one-on-one part. So, hey, folks, a lot of new faces here. Just our regular rules of order, what we do here, we turn off our phones. We don't have to hear your conversations. We don't want to hear your phones go off. And second, conversations you want to have, please step outside in the lobby. And three, we don't do clapping here, because you could intimidate someone else from coming to speak. So, please do us all a favor, work till we're all done, and then you can go outside and do all the clapping you want to do. We'll go from there. Our next speaker, please.
I mean, it was okay to clap for Enzo, because that was different.
Boy scout.
That was different.
Literally, boy scout. Anyone else? Public comment? Anyone else? All right. I'm Martha.
We got sheets for public comments.
Come down. Come down, you talk right now. You have to wait in line. There's nobody here but you. Evening.
I just wanted, this is Lieutenant Colonel Charlene Harding. Just want to address the snafu on the pier lighting. Obviously, you all got my email just the day before the 4th, asking just to confirm those lights are going to be lit with red, white, and blue. I mean, we've seen them in rainbow and sidewalks and whatnot all over town, celebrating people's way that people have sex, but 4th of July is something that we all should be extremely proud of, and I apologize, because I am just shaking here, and I know this is just a little snafu of some of you. Situation normal, all fouled up. But, you know, when I confer, I ask you to confirm it was nice of you to come back to me right away and say, yep, that's, that's the plan. This is how, or the mayor came back to me, but when you say, okay, yeah, from midnight to, for 24 hours, this is the plan, how do you not, how do you go for 24 hours and no one even notices? No one even checks? No one goes down to take photos? I mean, every other town around here, Redondo, Hermos El Segundo, are having some awesome 4th of July celebrations. And repeatedly, this city, even their little announcements on Instagram or whatnot, is, what it says is, oh, the city, the city offices are going to be closed. I mean, it's just, anyway. I mean, there's so much education that needs to be happening here. A lot of us, you know, some of you are my age and above, you grew up with that patriotism. The kids nowadays do not know it. They have to be taught that, they have to see these symbols, and that's why I'm putting this in your face, because this symbol is extremely important. For those of you that don't know me, my husband and I served over 55 years in the military. I mean, every day, you're laying your life on the line. You could be deployed at any moment. My son is, it is third deployment. You don't know what it's like when you're wondering if he's coming home. I've got my youngest little girl, well, graduated high school, in boot camp. I mean, this is our family business. We fought in probably every war there is in the United States, and we are extremely proud of this country. But, I mean, you take example of that veteran slide that kind of caught me by surprise, because this is not Veterans Day. This is a week of every American. I mean, it felt like you were just throwing a bone. I mean, anyway, I have so much more to say, but I think you got the gist.
Thank you. We've been doing this veterans recognition since March of 2023, Jim.
Evening.
Yeah, so next speaker, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Heather Kim, and I guess I'll just start with, I'm glad that City Council and Chief have, you know, talked about what happened with those two armed robbers at the Strand. I'm really, I wasn't just disappointed, I was livid, and I was sick to my stomach about it. I have four children. My oldest will be 19 in September, and because she's, you know, old, I allow her to be in charge of the little ones, and we frequently, as a family, go to the pier, go to the beach, go to the Strand. My mom, who is 73 years old, comes here quite often and does a lot of walking on the Strand by herself. So I was completely upset to hear that not only were the citizens not notified the first time, and by the way, my children and I were there. We weren't there when it happened, we were there after it happened, but between the two incidences. Had I known, we wouldn't have been there. Had I known, I would have been with my kids the entire time. I mean, not that we had to be there, but we just wouldn't have gone that night for fear because these suspects were not caught. So you have to understand, from a mother's point of view, that I don't feel safe coming here to the beach anymore with my kids, especially if they're not going to be supervised. If I don't have my gun on me, let's just call it what it is. This is a public safety issue, and every one of us citizens, whether we have kids or not, have a right to be informed about these types of incidences that directly correlate to whether or not our lives could be taken, our property can be taken. And it's not just the property. Yes, of course, property can be replaced, but these people's sense of security and safety, that will never be replaced, okay? That didn't happen to me personally, it didn't happen to my children, but I feel for them, and I don't feel safe anymore either. How are you guys? You know what? The chief made her apologies and stuff, but the buck stops with you guys ultimately. The communication lost, I mean, there have been other incidences, and I don't care if she says crime is down. Guess what? Crime is down because people like me actually didn't report crime for a while, too. I'm changing my habits now, I'm reporting everything, but I'm going to tell you that those statistics are not something to be proud of just because something is down this month compared to last year. It's not. It's a complete and utter failure of City Council and Chief and everything. And by the way, all thugs, they should never be have sight and release. There should be no discretion for sight and release. If something happens, thugs need to be hauled off to jail in handcuffs, fingerprinted, and put in a jail cell, and then cops need to lollygag while they get their reports together and let them suffer a little bit so that they know Manhattan Beach is a place that you don't want to come to. They will tell their thug friends, we were uncomfortable here, okay? We don't want to come back to this town. And that's what needs, that's the message that needs to go out right now.
Thank you, Heather. Our next speaker? Seeing none here. Martha, anybody on Zoom?
There's no reception.
No one on Zoom? All right, Council, closed public comment. Move to item H, Consent Calendar, and a motion to the items of four, five, and nine. Is that correct? Yes, thank you. In a motion and a second. Motion by Councilmember Lesser. Second by Councilmember Hoerth. Roll call, please. All right.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. We're going to move to item, section I, Item Number consent calendar, item number four. Councilor Napolitano.
Thank you, Your Honor. So item number four is a request for Council to adopt a resolution approving a pilot agreement with the Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $67,300 for North Manhattan Beach Business Improvement District Management and Executive Coordination Services. This is to appropriate $67,300 from the North Manhattan Beach bids balance within the parking fund and adjust corresponding revenues. And my question really goes to that last part, and adjust corresponding revenues. What does that mean if they collect about $25,000 a year? If this goes beyond the pilot project, it's $67,000 a year, they've got about $400,000 balance in the parking fund, that's going to be eaten up at some point, so it's not going to be sustainable if it continues on at that cost, which I assume will also increase with the cost of living in the future. So how is that going to be addressed beyond this? I know it's a pilot project, but I also know how pilot projects go.
Honorable Councilmember Napolitano, George Gabriel, Assistant to the City Manager. So this resolution, this agreement comes before you tonight by way of direction from the North Manhattan Beach Advisory Bid. You are certainly correct that there is a structural deficit in terms of a fiscal year budget for the North Manhattan Beach bid. There is a balance of about $423,000 or so in the North Manhattan Beach reserve balance. That being said, the North Manhattan Beach Advisory Board is aware that this is not sustainable. We did, actually did a preliminary five-year forecast of expenditures with cost of living increases. And so within the first five years or so, if costs remain the same, not with COLA adjustments as well, they will probably eat out, eat about half of their reserve balance with the revenues that are coming in as it is right now. So they're certainly aware that it is not something that can be maintained, but another aspect of the bringing on the chamber is that the North Manhattan Beach Advisory Board is, wants to move towards the same model that the Downtown Business Professional Association operates under a nonprofit status. And in doing so, they want to create additional revenue opportunities so that it can become structural at some point. But I think in the preliminary stage right now...
So what does that mean, additional revenue opportunities, even as a nonprofit? Because with the North End Stroll and any other events they want to self-promote, that's eating even further into those funds.
Yeah. It's been taken into account in our preliminary analysis right now. The North End Stroll, certain projects that they may undertake as well.
How are they going to raise money in the future?
That's part of the contract in order to explore revenue opportunities.
And they, of course, have the ability to change the assessments if everybody votes to increase those, and perhaps they would if they get results out of this contractual agreement.
So we're chicken and the egg. All right. Any council questions?
Open up public comment on this item. Any questions about what we're talking about here? Any comments? Seeing none here. How about on Zoom, Martha? None? Closed public comment, Council?
You know, I guess just to continue on since I pulled it, I'm, I'll go with the pilot project because they've asked to do so, knowing that at least they know it's not sustainable, and they're going to look for additional revenues, as long as that additional revenue source isn't necessarily the city, so.
And this is only a one-year agreement, by the way.
Understood. Okay.
So I'm the council representative to the North Manhattan Business Improvement District, and this has been discussed for probably about six months now. And there was an executive there before who actually came up with the whole concept of the holiday stroll. And I think you just, you know, you have an app, you have an app description, it's the chicken and the egg. You know, they're just trying to find something that will go ahead and generate more business for the North Manhattan area. They, they're very proud of the work that they've done and the stores that they got and the restaurants that they have. I think the vibrancy has gone up in that area, and I think they deserve kind of a chance to see what they can do.
Is that a motion?
So I'd like to approve this.
Can I make that motion? Make the motion? There you go. You're going to make the motion to approve.
Okay, I make the motion to approve.
And a second by Councilmember Hoerth. What is the motion you want to make?
To adopt Resolution Number 23-0085, consideration of a resolution approving a pilot agreement with the Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $67,300.
Perfect. First and a second in the comments. Seeing none.
It's also to appropriate the funds.
Appropriation, yes. As noted, roll call, please.
No, we can just...
There's mine.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item up is item number five, Councilor Napolitano.
Thank you. This is a, there was a resignation on the library commission, so there's an open seat. There are some folks who expressed interest from our last interview go-around, but before approving this, I just wanted to check in with my colleagues here in case you wanted to consider the alternative, which is to open things up. I'm good with going from the list of people that we have, but if anybody wants to open it up to advertising and opening, and really, I just wanted to bring that to Council if you chose.
Got it. Councilmember Hoerth.
Yeah, I really appreciate you bringing up that idea because that's certainly an option. I do, I'm comfortable with this list because we still have some really good people to select. You know, I remember wishing some of these people, I had a spot for them. So I'm good going with this, but I appreciate, you know, the discussion to open it up.
Anyone else? Anyone else see the comments? George Franklin.
Yeah, so I just have a question. Do we know who's still interested on the list?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Once Council approves tonight, we will contact them to see if they're still interested.
Okay.
And then it'll appear on the next agenda for appointment.
Will we have a chance to, if no one's interested, or if just one person's interested, do we have a chance to come back and revisit?
We could put that in the staff report and give Council the option to do outreach, advertise, and come back.
Okay. Thank you.
Any else? In a motion? I need a motion by Councilmember Hoerth. A second by Mayor Pro Tem Franklin. Voting screen, please.
Do you need me to state anything?
You want to state the motion?
I move to accept the resignation of Commissioner Sadie Newell and declare vacancy and direct the city clerk to return with a list of interested applicants.
Perfect. We've done this before.
Not my first, Joe.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Next item pulled consent calendar is item number nine. Napolitano.
Yes, I pulled this one as well. You know, I think that these are improvements. This is for some traffic improvements at Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Pacific Avenue. I will never understand why we did a right turn only and a through and left there since everyone wants to take a left and it holds everybody up who wants to go across. So this would fix that with a number of other fixes, but it raises questions to me regarding a couple of the items. One is to add a Class II bike lane while maintaining street parking for most locations. You know, it's hard to tell from the diagram exactly where we're talking about. Being a council that is not in favor of road diets, I'm concerned with what has happened out here on 15th Street and what happened down Morningside when we made traffic improvements. And then I also am not in favor of just isolated bike lanes where there's nothing for miles, then there's a half-block of a bike lane, and then there's nothing again because of parking. I don't think that's well thought out. If we're going to encourage people to use a bike lane, we need to have an extended length of bike lane to make that work. The other, you know, the addition of pedestrian crosswalk and Westley, provide pedestrian convenience, I kind of tag along with our other item in the, further in the agenda here regarding Valley Drive, and the idea that what is being asked for is not just crosswalks there, but at some point making those raised crosswalks, which is basically a speed hump. And, you know, why is that being proposed there and not here, given the designation of streets I believe are still local collectors? And so there's just, you know, we're doing some things in some places and others and others. I'm looking for some consistency in our traffic approach and in these changes that we have here. Either we're going to do, because the second we get a request for raised crosswalks in one place, we're going to have them everywhere. And are we ready for that? Do we want that? And so why is it that we have, don't have those here, though? And again, I want to see before approving this what that Class II bike lane means, where it's going to go, and why? Because I've asked before, let's explore a bike lane from Aviation down to the pier, and I know that's going to raise hackles because then it's going to impact people's parking, but we need some consideration here as to if we're going to put in, we can't just put a bike lane in a half-block and then throw people to the wolves of traffic for the rest of the length. So those are my concerns with this.
Director Leir, you want to?
Senior Civil Engineer Helen Shi has been working extensively on this project, and she will answer those questions.
Helen, before you start, can we put that, do you have the screenshot of the proposed road lane improvements, Martha? Give Helen a chance to catch her notes before you start, and we can all see what we're I also appreciate not shrinking down to number two font. Thank you for making it a little larger.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery and City Council members. My name is Helen Shi, Senior Civil Engineer from Public Works. So I'm trying to get all the questions. If I miss anything, please let me know. So the first or foremost you asked more is for the bike lane, Class II bike lane. That is in our mobility plan. We're trying to have bike lanes on both sides of Manhattan Beach Boulevard, all along from the pier to Aviation Boulevard, the city border. Even so, now I believe we don't have the whole stretch, but we're trying to, that's why this conceptual plan has the range from Ardmore Avenue up to east of Pine Avenue. And we also applied, city staff actually applied for this whole Manhattan Beach Boulevard corridor analysis. That's for the purpose of the whole systematic bike lane.
So is that going to change westbound Manhattan Beach Boulevard from, you said, Pine down to Ardmore into a single lane?
Right. That's a, that's a purpose. Reason why is for...
I just want to be clear. You're taking two lanes of traffic and putting them down to one lane?
For eastbound direction.
No, I was talking westbound.
Westbound direction originally is two lanes. We're changing it to one lane west of Point Sedia Avenue because of merging.
Thank you, Your Honor. Prosecution rests.
Helen, if you go through the rest of your answers, the rest, we'll circle back to you. You want to address the rest of his questions, we'll come back to you.
Okay. And then the question you have is for the crosswalk. The added new crosswalk on the west leg, it's just a regular crosswalk as we do continental crosswalk for all the signalized intersections.
I know, I read that. But my question was why, if we're proposing a raised crosswalk along Valley Drive, we're not proposing a raised one here at Pacific Avenue?
You mean on the Pacific Avenue or on Manhattan Beach Boulevard?
Either one. Either or both.
It's a signalized intersection. Usually we don't do raised crosswalk. That's not a standard or state regulation or state standard just doesn't allow it. Unless it's a local or it's low-volume streets, then that could be considered. But at the current standard is bicyclists or scooters, they don't prefer anything raised crosswalk. So that is a little bit facing out unless, if the volume's really low and the neighborhood doesn't have any opponents to it, otherwise we don't purposely propose raised crosswalk.
Okay. And your next, are there any other questions you have? Just pass that one. Hold on, Jim.
I would just say, again, this is, since I brought it, I'll defer in a second, but, I mean, this is a major thing that is on consent calendar that before we just asked about bring back any road diets or bike lanes that are going to impact, you know, traffic in Manhattan Beach. I know we want to encourage, I know it's part of the master plan, but on a case-by-case basis, we need to review this because that's going to take away a significant amount of parking, even going eastbound or westbound. It's going to take away parking, it's going to narrow from two lanes to one lane of traffic going westbound. That's a big deal, and I think we need to have a real hearing on that, not bury that in consent calendar item.
Great. Mr. Franklin, you're, I'm sorry, Councilor Lesser first. It wasn't a question.
On street parking wise, we're taking out seven spaces and adding four, so its total loss is three parking for the whole stretch.
You can park all up and down, so you're going to have the bike lane go around the parking spaces eastbound from Ardmore to Pine?
It will be the parking on the side and the bike lane and the travel lane. That's the layout. So on the curve is parking, and outside the parking is bike lane, and then the travel for the vehicle travel.
I guess I'm surprised because most cities are going the opposite of that and putting the cars farther into the traffic and protecting the bikes closer to the curb.
This is actually more of just to be, you know, because we don't have enough of this. This is more compatible to our right-of-way. If you want to have the bike lane and then the parking, it will cause potential safety hazard for the people who's parking the car getting out of the...
I disagree with that. I'm just saying that's what other communities are doing, so there needs to be...
It could be an option.
I'm sure there's some study that shows one is better than the other.
Right.
But the bottom line is, I'm really addressing Council as to the loss of a lane of driving from Pine to Ardmore, again, buried in a consent calendar item.
We did, sorry to interrupt, we did an analysis. The reason why we want to reduce the lane is because the peak-hour traffic counts for westbound direction or eastbound direction per lane demand is 500 cars, which per the industrial standard, the state standards, the capacity of per lane per hour is 1,500. So where only 500, we're way below the threshold to be, you know, causing any alarm. standard, the state standards, the capacity of per lane per hour is 1,500. So where only 500, we're way below the threshold to be, you know, causing any alarm. That's the reason why.
I don't know how often you've driven that.
Especially on a Saturday.
Let me, let me discuss this with these folks. I wasn't asking for that information. I appreciate it, but I don't need that information. I'm talking about road diet.
We got a Councilwoman Lesser, then Temperance Franklin, and then Councilwoman Hoard. So don't go anywhere, Helen, stand by, we're going to have questions coming.
I too miss the fact that we were going to be taking out a whole lane of traffic on westbound Pacific as part of this mobility plan compliance. Can you repeat one more time what you responded to Councilmember Napolitano? Based on the mobility plan, this configuration would go how far east? All the way to Sepulveda Boulevard?
Are we only talking about westbound direction?
For now I am.
Yes, so for westbound direction, we're only going from the, a little bit east of John Street to west of Pacific Avenue. So it's basically one block currently because there's only one lane west of Pacific Avenue.
But could that not mean that traffic headed westbound will begin to funnel and back up heading eastbound from there and rush our traffic?
Well, currently you have to merge to one lane west of Pacific Avenue.
Further to the west.
And then the reason why we want to make it to the east is because current merging area is only 60 feet. It costs unsafety behavior for the drivers who's trying to speed, get ahead of each other. So that's why neighbors hear the noise of speeding and the, you know, very loud noise of braking. And they, I mean, there's near misses or recorded accidents due to the really short merging area. It's actually according to the MUTCD or other standards, city, state standards, merging lane, merging lanes of 60 feet is really not up to the standard. So we need to make it longer. So to make it longer because west of Pacific Avenue, we really don't have any room. So we have to drag it to east.
I think for my part, it might be helpful to bring this back along with our mobility plan as an attachment to better understand what the overall vision is, just as Councilmember Napolitano is suggesting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pretend Franklin?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So Councilmember Napolitano addressed westbound. I just want to talk a little bit about eastbound on this because I travel that a lot. I've been trying to imagine this for the last week or so, what it would look like and how the traffic would go. So I believe this needs quite a bit more study because even taking eastbound traffic east of Ardmore through the Pacific intersection, you're, this looks like it's going to start squeezing the traffic into one lane, starting from Ardmore. Because you've got a parking and then the bike lane, and then it would only be one lane. Is that correct, do you think?
Currently, the lane, the two lanes starts, I mean, west of Ardmore is only one lane. So east of Ardmore, it opens up like a pocket, so we have two lanes. So according to the traffic analysis, the volume is really low. We really don't need two lanes for this stretch per the volume analysis. And then you're only picking up traffic from downtown area and from the side street along this stretch to get more and more traffic. So the point you reach probably west of Sepulveda Boulevard, then you accumulate enough traffic to guarantee for two lanes. Otherwise, we don't need two lanes.
Okay, well, just from personal observation, it's going to be a lot.
Also, we'll decide whether we need two lanes or not.
It's going to be a lot more.
Per the analysis, sorry.
Yeah, it's going to be, you know, a lot more impactful than that. There's going to be a long line of cars coming down there. I think there might be an increase in road rage here with that. And I can understand the dedicated left turn lanes at, at Pacific. But also too, does your, I'm not expecting you to answer this, I don't know if it's been studied, but how many cars are actually turning left on eastbound Manhattan Beach Boulevard at Pacific?
Turning onto Pacific.
Because, and not to say that they don't deserve to turn left, but they're turning left now and it seems to be fine. But you're, because without the dedicated lane, there's two lanes that can keep going east, and it really does build up. We're getting a lot of visitors and a lot of local traffic as well going that way. My other question was-
Rush hour backs up to Point Sedia.
Yeah, I know. I mean, yeah.
It's because the bottleneck is down to Sepulveda Boulevard.
Trust me, just, this is going to come back, okay? Accept that.
Right. So it said that there was some outreach to residents. Unless I'm missing it, I didn't see any of that, the result of that outreach in the report.
So basically, the conceptual plan is based on the feedback from that community meeting. The community meeting was April 20th this year. We did the ads on Beach Reporter and the city website and social medium, and also I sent out mailers within 500 feet of the intersection. So the attendees to the meeting is five to eight residents showed up, you know, sometime more, sometime less. And then we collect their opinion. Most of them are really close to this intersection. And then this conceptual plan here shown on the screen is actually after the discussion, we collect all their opinion. This is the final or preliminary design based on their comments.
Right, okay. And then, so how many comments were returned by mail or, I mean, did people return by mail? Were they given an opportunity to email?
No, they just show up to the public meeting.
Five to eight residents?
And then we have phone calls from residents and the emails. So there's another two, two, three phone calls and the emails. And also before this, this has been a long time issue. So we had in last two, two, three years, we've been talking about this. City, a city traffic engineer and the previous directors or previous city engineer has been discussing the whole issues. So it has been long, long, very like three years, at least three years plan to have this preliminary design. So we didn't really come up suddenly. It is based on the community concern.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hoard?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering, I think that I have more of a comment, comments, statements, you know, direction than questions. If you want, if you need to open this up, Republican and I can speak after that.
Thank you, Helen.
That'd be great.
I have one more question. Traffic engineer, Eric, can I ask a question? Just, can you give us an overview from the traffic question, traffic engineer point of view? Knowing that three of us, four of us, have gone through this road diet fiasco, Vista Del Mar before, and we were all throwing bricks at LA till they opened it up again. So we're not fans of road diets, obviously, but tell us from a traffic point of view, and we've all been in that mile high wagon train of cars going westbound and coming out eastbound. So 500 cars may be a number statistical. Well, I'm car number 799 then because there's always traffic going both directions. Not just MB Open, Six Man, Hometown Fair, fireworks, it's jammed. So can you give us your point of view, not the engineering side, but traffic point of view?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Montgomery, Mayor of the City Council. Yes, I was, I do remember.
Very clearly the Vista Del Mar fiasco, that was a part of that and writing letters as well. I think the City Council deserves a, a full report, a review of what the pros and cons are of the different options that are available here. Having it on consent probably didn't give you that opportunity to do that. The, there's some advantages to moving back the merge lane in the westbound direction for safety reasons. There are advantages to having a bike lane in both directions through this one narrow corridor where we don't have a lot of other opportunities to provide a bike lane anywhere else to get to the downtown. Through the, there's other advantages for the, for this, for this configuration, including extra crosswalk locations, left turn pockets where we didn't have them before that backs up traffic and some of the other things. This was an opportunity that we had. We had a, a project for Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Pacific Avenue, and we're looking to try to make it safer, make it, make it flow better. Okay? There are some other alternatives that you can consider and take a look at, not having bike lanes, having two lanes in the eastbound direction like we have now. There's some trade offs. So you may or may not have, be able to have a left turn pocket, or you may not be able to have bike lanes and two lanes in, in one direction. So rather than go through the, the microcosm of that, I think you probably would benefit from having this come back to you.
Thank you. So we do have, I'm sorry, we have flexibility, though. We're not locked into one option or the other. We have more than one option, what to do.
Yes, you, of course you do. And, and we want to make sure that we bring any reconfiguration back to you for, for your review and approval.
Do that.
Yeah, a question, Eric. Is there any jeopardy, are any of the funds jeopardized by not putting in a bike lane there?
No, not for not putting in a bike lane.
Can you consider other, I mean, I haven't ridden my, you all know I ride my bicycle a lot. I've never ridden on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. But you can just go through the neighborhood, you can just go Pacific to, I don't even know what street it is, and then, you know, you go by American Martyrs and then it's nice and calm, there's stop signs, there's streets without many parked cars, you go down 15th, and that leads you right into, you know, there's a stoplight and it leads you right into, right into downtown. So seems like there's some alternatives that-
There are small alternatives.
That's what would come back to us.
Thank you, Eric. Stand by, I'm sure I have questions. Open up public comment now. As an excited person, come down and talk to us.
Always fall, always jumping down. Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, to state the obvious here a little bit, this is a massive change to Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Pacific. And regardless of whether, what the traffic analysis says for the numbers and what we can do or what we can't do, I am encouraged that this is not being passed on consent. And thank you to Councilmember Napolitano for pulling it and having some discussion. I read through the agenda package and had no intention of even speaking tonight. I did not see anything about somehow Manhattan Beach Boulevard going down to one lane. And we may have noticed the residents within 500 feet or 250, whatever the thing is, this will impact all of us in Manhattan Beach. And if they're, if we're going to change Manhattan Beach Boulevard down to one lane or reduce lanes in any direction westbound or, I mean, I agree with Mayor Montgomery. I don't know, I must be car 501 every single time because I am backed up going westbound and then going eastbound in the morning. People are, it's, you know, getting out of town. Anyway, I'm encouraged, but how this got on consent is bothersome and whatever needs to happen, but such a massive change for us, for all residents in Manhattan Beach, we really need to look at this in a little more detail. And Councilmember Napolitano, thank you for pulling it. I had no idea that this is what was in there, and it certainly was not clear in the council agenda that was posted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any next comment?
Hello, Charlene Harding again. I just wanted to, don't piggyback on that one. I traverse Manhattan Beach Boulevard to get down to the pier all the time and it, it's, we could use another lane for traffic. It just seems, I'm sure there's, Public Works or whatever office it is is just looking for different opportunities to make life better and, gosh, I would love to see more bike lanes, but I don't think that's the right place for it. I also love to ride my bike up to PV down the pier, but I'll take those side roads. It's, I don't feel nervous going down. It's actually really nice to see all different homes, take a different route every time. But I would be a little nervous even riding down Manhattan Beach, even on a designated path. And it already is where you, the two lanes go down to one, you know, you're supposed to cut over going west, you're supposed to cut right to go to, towards American Martyrs. People use that as a passing lane. I mean, everyone's just looking to get to that beach as fast as possible. So, yeah, I don't think this is the best idea. This is just totally thinking out of the box, but if we're trying to maybe avoid some of the big roads like Sepulveda or Manhattan Beach, maybe we do a bridge for bikes to get over and just avoid these busy roads altogether. I think that it seems unsightly to me to have anything like that, but maybe we need to think of totally different ideas, too, just to keep the bikes off the major thorough fairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Flexibility, Napolitano is open for bridges? Next speaker?
Oh, my golly.
That's hurtful.
That was hilarious.
Can't see, does anybody see it in there? No? Anyone else want to speak on this item? How about on Zoom, Martha? Nobody? All right, closed public comment. I'm sorry, the line, Councilwoman Franklin, you're gone. Councilwoman Hoard, you're next, and Councilwoman Lesser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. So I think, you know, obviously, you know, the conceptual plan probably shouldn't come on consent. And I so appreciate, as everyone here has said, Councilmember Napolitano for pulling it. I mean, wow. And it's also a great example of something can be technically correct and yet not, not kind of based in our daily lives. And I appreciate the speaker who said staff wants to make our lives better, you know, so no one's doubting that and, you know, no one's doubting that there's some technical specs and they pencil out. However, if you've ever driven kids to middle school in the morning headed from, you know, I guess the west part, you know, west of Valley and you're coming up that hill headed east, do not go, do not take away any lanes and coming down on the weekend, coming down anytime. So I think we're all feeling like there needs to be some options here and some work. I want to say, though, that I do really appreciate the, the left, you know, re-aligning the lane so that you have a dedicated left turn lane and then the straight and right turn lane and nev, you know, going west on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. I mean, I also drive that nearly every day and that's never made any sense. But we're not going to pick and choose right now and say yes, no, maybe so. We're, let's bring it back, which I think we're all saying. Also, to Councilmember Napolitano's point, I think, I don't think you were asking for a raised crosswalk in this project, but you were saying, you know, we've got this project coming up later on tonight that we're going to hear from the neighbors and we're talking about traffic calming, and so we're talking about a raised crosswalk. And you were maybe saying, well, should we be thoughtful and consistent in our approach? Although, you know, the engineer did mention why potentially you wouldn't do it. So I appreciate that question. So I think we're not going to put this, move this forward and ask them to come back. And I asked staff to really think about going beyond a notification because it is not affecting only the residents who live right there. It affects everybody in this community. That's like the art, the heart of, you know, getting east to west, north to south, one of them. And, you know, we all brought up, or a lot of us brought up the road diet at the beginning. There's nothing that affects residents more and makes them angrier or happier as a quality of life issue than traffic. Right? I mean, it is the first, it is really something that affects us so viscerally. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lesser?
I look forward to viewing with the community, the alternative policy alternatives when this comes back. I would second on to Councilmember Hoard's idea that somehow we advertise this. But more broadly, I just wanted to again thank Councilmember Napolitano for raising this issue as a consent calendar item because like every member up here on this dais, I pride myself on reviewing each of the staff reports. It's not clear from the staff reports, the magnitude of the change that would be affected by this proposal. So I look forward to a more in-depth conversation, and that's it for now.
I'll wrap it up here, the comments, and I think Charlene's got one point. Nothing, Eric or Helen, directly should be out the creativity list here? I make reference to the bridge part, but I'd be open to whatever we could do to preserve that limited time we'll spend in frustration, either going west from PCH or coming up east towards PCH. Anything you do that would shorten or squeeze traffic into one lane, to me, would affect all the way behind to Valley Ardmore going out of downtown and then coming into it from the east side going west from PCH. So I'm loathe to squeeze a lane or give away a lane. I'm open to the bicycle portion of it, but we can do it without taking away a lane of traffic. You've heard our comments up here and everybody else's comments. And I agree that something like that, we consider taking away a lane anywhere in the city. We need to let the whole city know what would happen, that they're involved in it. But now we know, you've heard the comments from council. So I would just suggest that we all continue the item and bring this back later days so we can see to traffic engineers' point, pros and cons. Bike lane, good, no good. If we give a bike lane, what do we get from it? And then idea of traffic lanes, if you do this or protect a left turn, what do we give up? So that's the focus going forward. If you want to bring it back, whatever you think, two weeks or whatever time frame it's going to be, we'll stay satisfied until you bring us back. The opposite will go from there. So we'll continue the item until Public Works is ready to bring it back.
Not on consent.
Not on consent.
If that's not clear.
Yes. Director, any questions you have for us?
Direction is very clear. I apologize for how this went off and loud and clear.
Thank you very much. All right.
For the record, Mayor Pro Tim Franklin also said he was going to pull this from the agenda.
Good job. You get half the assists. All right. Our next item J, there's no public hearing, folks. Let me move to item K, general business and item number 13. Consider recommendation from the Parking and Public Improvements Commission to traffic calming measures on Valley Drive between 27th Street and Sepulveda, otherwise known as the Pacific Coast Highway. Consider for resolution for stop signs in all directions intersection of Valley Drive and Pine Avenue and adoption of a termination of exemption pursuant to section. I won't stop there. We'll go with the, I'm sorry, who's going to do? Comdev director, Ms. Conian, Taline? Traffic engineer is not going to go anywhere. Good, stuck in traffic.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, Taline Marzakanyan, your community development director here. I just would like to introduce Eric Zandvliet, our city traffic engineer, to present this item.
Welcome back, Eric.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Director Taline? My name is Eric Zandvliet, City Traffic Engineer. I'll keep this particular presentation fairly short. We don't have a PowerPoint presentation for you. But by means of background, I'd like to say that this item came to us through a public item at the city council back in March of this year. The residents of the Valley Drive area between 27th Street and Oak had asked for some type of traffic calming after a couple of significant accidents. The city, they also provided a follow-up petition for that. On April 27th, we brought the item to the RPPIC, our Parking and Public Improvements Commission, with a list of possible traffic calming measures and a background for that. The commission reviewed all of the staff's recommendations at time and unanimously approved those. In addition to those staff recommendations, they also recommended painting a solid double yellow center line on Valley Drive between those two streets, 27th and Oak, as well as recommended a stop sign at the corner of Valley Drive and Pine. We are bringing the PPIC report to you tonight along with a recommendation for all of the staff's, all of the PPIC's recommendations. So the staff recommendation is the PPIC's recommendation. And that includes the installation of the double yellow center line on Valley Drive between 27th and Oak, a speed activated flashing speed limit sign on Valley Drive west of Oak. It's facing the traffic that's coming in from Sepulveda Boulevard. Constructing a temporary landscaped center median and an eastbound left turn pocket and a curb extension. It's narrowing the lanes on Valley Drive between Sepulveda Boulevard and Oak in an effort to reduce the inbound traffic in that direction. It also provides extra visibility for the driveway for the senior apartments to get them a little bit farther out so they can see around the corner. And so that would be a recommendation for that. Also providing for a left turn pocket from Valley Drive onto Oak Drive, which then reduces the backup that would happen back there. Also to install two painted crosswalks at Valley Drive and Walnut and Valley Drive and Elm Avenue. That would be painted at first and then reconstructed, considered for a capital project to install raised crosswalks along with bulb outs at the corner. Again, to restrict that crosswalk length as well as to reduce the traffic speeds on Valley Drive. It has a traffic calming effect for that. And to the point from Councilmember Napolitano, this is a local road with a posted speed limit of 30 miles an hour. Those are more appropriate for a raised crosswalk in the future. Raised crosswalk, as our council member duly noted, is kind of like a speed hump. It gives you a vertical difference of four inches or so and discourages speeding. It also, the other recommendation would also be to adopt resolution number 2391, approving stop signs in all directions at the intersection of Valley Drive and Pine Avenue. The last item on the recommendation list is to adopt a determination of exemption pursuant to section 15301(c) of the California SEQA, declaring this not a project. And so that concludes my report. The items and the locations are displayed on the screen for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Eric. Stand by. Councilperson Napolitano, you're up first, and then Councilwoman Lesser.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Again, concern over the implementation, future implementation of any raised crosswalks, you know, especially at this stretch, rather than being a more strictly residential street, since you're turning off of Sepulveda there. You're going to get a lot of people who've taken this road that don't necessarily live in and have each their visitors. And so I can only imagine we're going to have some, lots of signage and road paint telling people, there's a raised curb here. Because I've experienced this in other communities and it doesn't necessarily slow them down and sends them flying sometimes, especially coming from that stretch. I guess if the idea is for safer crosswalks, where we've put in other places, the flashing crosswalks where people have to stop and the lights are flashing in the ground as well as up above, why aren't those being considered here? We've put them along Highland, we've put them on Morningside, we've put them on different areas of town.
Correct. So the answer to that question, Councilmember Napolitano, as we do in our neighborhood traffic calming program, we take it in a stepwise approach. We're putting in, we would be recommending putting in painted crosswalks at this time, studying it, taking a look at it, seeing how it works. If we're not getting a speed reduction out of that, we would then take it to the next step. At that time, it would go back to the city council for you to consider the raised crosswalks and/or flashing stop, sorry, flashing beacons.
Flashing crosswalks, yes. Okay. All right. Thank you, Eric. Councilwoman Lesser?
Wanted to follow up on your response to Councilmember Napolitano with regard to timing. Is the staff recommendation to authorize all of these calming measures at once? Or is there a suggestion with the input by council on prioritization to do certain of these calming measures immediately, those that we can do immediately, and then stagger some of the others after an initial review? It's unclear from the staff report.
That's a very good question, Councilmember Lesser. The intent is for the initial traffic calming measures to go in all at once. And that would be a painted median between Oak and Sepulveda with markers for that. Painted crosswalks at Elm and Walnut, a stop sign at Pine, and then to come back in six months, oh, and the flashing speed sign. So when the, when you exceed the speed limit, the sign has a white, you know, little lights around the outside to warn you that you're going over the speed limit. It's not quite like a speed awareness sign that's farther down the street. So we want to make sure that there's consistent speed reduction through the entire length of this stretch. It's a very long stretch and so people would then speed up between parts. You know, if you only had crosswalks at Elm and Walnut, they may speed up between that section. And so that's the intent.
Okay. You and I have had an email exchange with regard to recent legislation, AB 43, which might allow the city to reduce the speed limit once regulations are promulgated in the coming year. This is a street that I've been familiar with and, let's see, I think goes back 19 years ago when I first was serving on the Parking and Public Improvements Commission. We were forced to increase the speed limit to 30. And I welcome your explaining why we were forced to increase it and then also describe why we might have an opportunity now to reduce it. And it involves the senior villas, actually, that's not their full name, on the street. So I'll let you describe that because I'm wondering why that's not included in the staff report and whether that should not also be one of the directions here to reduce that speed limit.
Sure. Thank you for the question and for everyone's benefit, AB 43 was a legislation passed by the state of California to allow for an additional five mile an hour speed reduction in special areas such as senior activity centers, school areas, and high pedestrian areas that have been designated as a safety zone. That legislation was passed last year. It doesn't go into effect until June, sorry, July 1st of 2024, so about one year from now. The state hasn't come up with the process and procedures to allow for that monitoring and for that checklist at this point. The senior apartments would qualify, we think, for that designation and then we could reduce the speed limit to 25 miles an hour.
And then final question is, you and I also in an exchange, there is a speed monitoring sign south of the intersection at Pine, which is not working. And you were going to follow up with Public Works to make sure it was. I was there during rush hour, visiting with the petition maker, Mr. Felkey, and I couldn't believe how fast many vehicles were going and the signage wasn't activated.
That's very true. And if you watch the speed feedback sign when it is working, you can see how fast they're going. And you can see that they, you know, sometimes slow down as they see their sign. The batteries in the sign have basically died. They can't be recharged again. They're about five years old and that's about how old the sign is. So we've asked Public Works to go in and replace the batteries on those signs. It was working about a week before that because I remember I go by, pass that stretch of road about once a day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we go through the roster again. Mayor Tim Franklin, you're up first, then Councilman Hoard, then back to Steve. I got one more question.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Eric. So my, I walked the area actually two times even before, even before this came to the council today because the residents, you know, reached out to us and wanted some help here. So you've got a recommendation here for a dedicated left-hand turn lane from eastbound North Ardmore to northbound Sepulveda.
Correct.
AKA PCH.
PCH.
On the other side of the light when you get down. But you have two lanes there now, right? So there's two lanes now that are butting Sepulveda eastbound from North Valley. And so I was just wondering, what is the correction going to be?
The left turn pocket would be just west of Oak Avenue.
Right.
Right. And so that's not an area affected by the Sepulveda intersection.
Okay.
We're basically taking that wide intersection that has lots of pavement and reducing that amount of pavement. By doing that, we have a left turn pocket that we can provide in the middle. There was an accident last year where a left turning driver hit and collided with an eastbound driver coming off of Sepulveda Boulevard at a high speed.
Yeah, it's a terrible. Yeah. Okay.
Provides the refuge for that left turn driver.
Okay. And I was just a little disappointed that there wasn't really more detail on the proposed, did you call it a temporary landscape? Can you just sort of conceptually?
Sure. We brought this concept to.
I see all the pavement there and I just don't quite know how it's going to.
Sure, sure. The roadway is about 40 feet wide between the Belamar Hotel and the apartments. We would still have one lane in each direction as we do now. The center portion of the street would be, in a temporary basis, it would be painted green with edge lines on either side, using up some of that pavement width. It also makes people that are coming off of Sepulveda Boulevard slow down much more and slow down before they even get to Ocean, sorry, to Oak Avenue. Within that center median area, once you get beyond the intersection at Oak, that's where the left turn pocket would be in the opposite direction. So it would be painted and striped to begin with. If it works out, then we would come back with a permanent solution for raised curbs and some type of landscaping in the middle of the road.
Okay.
This item was brought to the city council about four years, about 2018. And at that time, the city council had deferred the issue to some other future date.
Okay. And going back to the recommended stop sign at Pine and Pine and Valley there. Some residents were concerned about the noise, you know, people stopping and then starting up again and things like that. I mean, is there any, just kind of any data around that? Is it just anecdotal?
Sure. When you install a stop sign, there's always pros and cons. The pros are that it could make turning movements at the intersection safer. On the con side, it could, as you say, increase the noise level at the intersection itself for people that are decelerating or accelerating, going into or out of the intersection where you wouldn't have that now. There's an increased potential for rear end collisions because you don't have to stop there now. And there is a potential for drivers, once they come to the stop sign at Valley Drive, then they might want to choose to go up Pine Avenue and go to Rosecrans instead of following their, following along Valley Drive. So there's pros and cons to it and that's, we laid that out in the PPIC report.
Okay. So southbound Pine, when you're coming up to Valley, if you're going to make a, go westbound on Valley, assume you have, like the way it is now, you just sort of creep out there and then there are parked cars that are on Valley, correct? That obscure the.
Yes. There's also red curb at the intersection.
There's also.
Also red curb at the intersection to try to keep those cars a little bit farther.
Oh, to keep them back a little bit. Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hoard?
Yeah, just a couple of, just a, basically a quick question about the curb outs at Walnut and Valley and I think Elm and Valley. Will those take out parking?
No, they would not. Those are the existing red curb zones.
Fabulous, thank you.
Councilperson Napolitano?
Thank you, Your Honor. One more thing I forgot to bring up. It goes to another safety issue, but was there consideration to eliminate the grossly substandard bike lane there, which was one of the reasons why the, I think it was a young child was side swiped riding a bike there. It's very, I don't know if it's even two feet wide. But, you know, we have cars obviously on one side. Again, mess with people's parking, traffic or their homes and they go out of their minds, which I understand, I would too. But it's not really, we barely, I think we have a sign there maybe saying bike lane, but it's not, it doesn't meet the standards for a bike lane.
You are correct. It is a bike route, it's not a bike lane. It's technically an edge line to narrow down some of the traffic so that you don't see a 14 foot wide lane, you see an 11 foot wide lane instead.
But instead of the sharrows, we're giving kind of a false sense of security.
In other areas, we have sharrows on Valley Drive and Ardmore. We did not do this in this segment because this actually predated all of our sharrows. I still think that the edge line helps reduce traffic speeds. They would be higher if we didn't have an edge line on the street and narrow down the lanes. The other alternative is to put the edge line on the, or, yeah, put the edge line on the other side of the street along the parked car side and then move the lanes over towards the parkway.
Yes, one observation, I know it's not necessarily a question of ours, is that at some point, we really need to reevaluate. It goes to the idea of an east-west bike lane to get from aviation to the pier, but also north-south, especially along the parkway where, you know, as, I know they'll be screaming and this is heresy, but, you know, incorporate. but, you know, incorporating some of the pathway there or something. We need to do something regarding a bike lane that goes along that, but that's for another day. So, okay, thank you, Your Honor.
I'd love to bring back a Veterans Parkway Bike Lane, Bike Way project to you.
Couple of questions and one more public comment.
Okay, just real quickly, I noticed also, and I had noticed it before, but the, when you come off of Sepulveda and you head west on Valley, right there at the hotel, it's downhill. And I remember thinking, that's kind of like accelerating and making the, are there any traffic mitigation ways of striping? Or things like that that tell people, hey, it's a hill, slow down or?
Right, so that's the intent of the median that we're proposing. That would have that type of narrowing effect to counteract that downgrade. People are coming off of Sepulveda Boulevard, you know, from a segment that's 45 miles an hour or more. And that's hard to get them to change their behavior.
Yeah, so is there any kind of messaging we can put on the pavement? Like, you know, go slow, hill, hill, slow down or?
And so that's what the flashing speed sign is intended to do. You'll be able to see that from coming around the corner from Sepulveda Boulevard. So you'll see your speed as you're going down that stretch.
Okay, but I'm just trying to remember if I've seen it elsewhere, maybe not in the city, but something that, hey, you're on a grade going down and, you know, just slow down.
Right. We'll try to design something into our temporary measure.
Eric, I've opened up two questions. I'm waiting to see anybody ask it here. I know it's one half the issue is in just whatever you could design the best program in the world. But it's part of its enforcement to police, people especially new stop signs. People are not going to pay attention right off the bat. They won't even see them for a while. They have to get used to our stop signs being in place. That being said, your program is to put things in place, watch it for six months. Doesn't slow down to where you feel on our counters, our mileage is dropping down fast enough. Then you come back with a secondary measure. Is that you or the state saying you can't make all these corrections at once? There must be a gap in time to show proof that we need a raised crosswalk, that we need more to flash and anger out lights, that we need more beacons 200 feet away. Which one is it?
So the answer to your question is, the state doesn't mandate the order and manner in which you can put in traffic calming measures. It's smart practice to put in only the amount of traffic calming that's necessary or that works. Overkill, you would put in more things than are necessary. It has, it actually would impede traffic in that sense.
So the cautious round, waiting to see if the first round makes everything better, drops the limit down, even before the new rule comes in effect in next year, five minute hour less, we're going to see if it makes a difference in six months. And if it does not, we go back to round two and add in the whole kitchen sink and everything else we're going to do.
Correct. It's very important that the residents are owners of this, of these measures. They want to have it.
Yes.
If we put in something and putting too many things that they don't want, then it's not going to be received well.
The inverse, that is true too. The first doesn't work, then right back where we started now adding more things to it. But the only thing we lose is time and effort there, and the probability still exists that we're not doing enough soon enough. But that's a different question. Open up public comment. Now anyone who wants to speak on this item, please come down and take all the chairs in front. Two minutes. Our timer will be a slight bell. If you hear it go ding, you'll know. Chad, you go first.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Mayor Montgomery and council members. My name is Chad Felke. I live on 311 North Valley Drive. Our number one objective is to make our community safer. On 4/27/23, the PPIC heard from many concerned residents about the dangerous conditions that continue to exist on North Valley Drive. Prior to this meeting, our North Valley Drive petition had over 125 signatures. Now that petition is 225 plus resident signatures and growing, all of whom are in favor of making our neighborhood safer. During this in-person meeting, the PPIC heard personal statements as well as 21 pages of written statements from concerned citizens detailing auto accidents, collisions, rollover accidents, parked cars that were totaled, pets that were killed, constant speeding vehicles, even up to 50 and 60 miles an hour that we see, and our young neighbor cyclists getting hit by a car. And thank you to those who came to North Valley to take a look at the conditions. It means a lot. You were able to see the speeds. You were able to see the kids hugging the bike lane, playing chicken with oncoming traffic. You were able to see families crossing, trying to get to Veterans Parkway in their strollers. So you got to witness real life stuff that happens daily. You didn't see a couple of the cars passing because of the dotted yellow lines, but that goes on a daily basis. So I urge you to pass Resolution 2391 to install a stop sign at Valley and Pine. It will be the easiest solution to a known dangerous problem in Manhattan Beach. This is a half-mile stretch in a residential neighborhood without a stop sign, and I'll repeat that. This is the longest half-mile stretch in Manhattan, excuse me, Manhattan Beach residential neighborhood without a stop sign. The city has also recently installed two stop signs at different intersections that don't have the traffic volumes or speed conditions or accident history that North Valley and Pine have. So please do the same for our neighborhood, especially considering that we have a senior living facility at North Valley and Oak. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker?
Hi, good evening. My name is Amber. I have my Exhibit A up there, a two-year-old little boy. I live on Walnut and I am, I moved to Manhattan Beach in August of 2021, two days before I gave birth to my son. And I'm a full-time law partner. I'm a full-time mommy. I have very little time, but I'm here on my Wednesday night spending it with you guys because this is important. My son goes to, I call, we call it the Green Belt. He goes to the Green Belt multiple times a week with his nanny. He meets up with his friends there. It is really important that we have something to protect those children crossing over. There is no, there is no protected crosswalk, and I'm sure you guys know this. There's no protected crosswalk all the way from Sepulveda down to Pacific. Then up to 27th Street, there's a stop sign. It is not a protected crosswalk. It is a stop sign. There is no crosshatching. So one of the great benefits to where we live and to this area is that Green Belt. It's really important to have that safe walking and jogging path. It's also important to have safe access to it. My son is two now. He's being protected by nannies watching, walking by me, by my husband. He's going to be older, and there are older children who don't know as well about how cars work, how speeds go, how timing works. And it's really important that we have those crosswalks there to protect them. So as a concerned member of this community, as a mother to the little boy up there making all the noise, I am urging you to take this very seriously and install some traffic calming measures in this area. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Amber. Our next speaker? All right, you made it.
Alan Kirschenbaum, here tonight representing PPIC. A child was sideswiped on a bicycle. We get that. One of the reasons we've put these in stages is also because we can get some things done right away. We can get in the stop sign. We can get in the crosshatching right away. Bowlbouts, raised curbs, that's a capital budget thing. We know how long it takes for capital budget things to get done. So people are demanding that we get these speed dampening efforts started at the very least so that we can show some improvement in speed dampening on the area. You get it. You understand the vision of, literally the vision of when you make that turn westbound from Sepulveda, people are doing 45 miles an hour on the north side of Rosecrans, and they're whipping around that curve because with the beautiful bridge we've just put in, it's actually a little bit wider to make that turn. So the safety factor has actually decreased on Valley. So what we're looking for when we say this vision is what are the things we can put in a driver's vision to make them realize it's not a freeway? What can we do to calm them down? And we deliberately did two resolutions. One was within what the commission could approve under its own authority. The other resolution is what goes to you folks for your approval. We hope you follow through on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Our next speaker?
First off, I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for your service to the city and your consideration of this important issue. Everybody loves Valley and Ardmore and the Green Belt. In many ways, it's the gateway to our city. But there have been issues for a long time. I'd like to thank our traffic engineer, Eric Zee, for prior work he's done to help our community. But the issues do persist. And I would just make a couple of points. First, I'd say that personally, I've had my car totaled, parked on Valley. I've had my rear view mirror destroyed. And I'm also an avid cyclist and walker. I never use the bike route. I just drive along by the cars like most bikes. And I encourage the council and our planning director to consider some holistic solutions to, you know, bicycle safety and circulation around the city. But just to close, I don't think that traffic calming is just something that's trendy or in vogue in community planning. My work takes me all over Los Angeles, and it's amazing, community after community, you see these traffic calming measures in place, successfully in place with no backlash. And personally, I think the reason why the traffic calming measures are more common these days is because we have kind of a frenzied Starbucks generation where everybody's pressed for time and rushing around and speeding and passing people and getting into road rage. And it's just a reaction to our society. We see that on North Valley Drive too. I think this is something that's important and needed. So I appreciate all your work on our neighborhood's behalf and for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's our closer. Ah, there he is. Ah, two more. You want to move over here so we can see you?
Well, good evening, honorable council members. It's a pleasure to be here with you. My name is Dale Keldrock. My wife and I have lived at 3007 North Valley Drive for going on a half century now, so probably before many of you were born. In any event, you, as longtime residents of Manhattan Beach and of Valley Drive, there's always been traffic on Valley Drive, and we moved in with our eyes wide open, as did other people. And I think our purpose here is not to try to reduce the amount of traffic because it's a major corridor and artery into the, you know, kind of the heart of the residential part of Manhattan Beach. But the issue really is the speed. And we've noticed over the course of the decades that my wife and I have lived here that the speed of the cars coming down Valley Drive has increased. I guess new technology and more torque and all the things that cars have, you know, have added to that. And, you know, during the time when my children grew up there, I was always a concern. But I think it's maybe even more so now, just seeing the number of things, and I'm not going to reiterate what the previous people have said. There have been a lot of things that have occurred right there on Valley Drive. And at this time, we really need to take it a little further than we have in the past. And I think the critical elements from my point of view are, number one, the stop sign. With that long, however, stretch of highway it is there, people get up a good bit of speed coming down Valley Drive. And so we need to do that. And I think also there needs to be signage for people coming onto Valley Drive sooner say, this is a 30 mile an hour speed limit here, so that they can see those things right away. And I think the time is due for these things to happen. And we have a lot, I'm happy to see a lot of new families in the neighborhood, school-aged children. And I think that even makes it more critical that these things be addressed. Again, I thank you for listening to us, and hopefully we can do these things for the good of the families and the children of Manhattan Beach.
Thank you, Dale. A real closer, there you go.
Yeah, I'm Erin Feldman, and I'm a 49-year resident of Manhattan Beach. So he's got me beat a little bit, but I don't live on Valley, but I live a couple of blocks. I'm on Elm and 35th. And so I just want to speak on behalf of all the neighbors that it's not just the people that live on Valley that are affected. It's all of us that cross onto the tracks, which that's what I call it. And, you know, we want to be safe. I have a dog. I have a running husband. I have kids that are older than Amber's two-year-old. You know, it's just for the good of our community and not just everybody that lives on Valley. But I do appreciate Chad Felke's efforts and all the neighbors and you guys for hopefully approving this project. Thanks.
Thank you, Erin. Anybody else here want to talk about this item? All right, let's go to Zoom. Martha?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you're good to go.
Hi, my name is Katherine Kramer, and I live on Valley. And I've lived here since 2009. But in March of 2011, I watched a boy get hit by a car outside of my house on a bike. And just, I mean, I'm obviously still horrified by it, but it affected the driver, the little boy, his mom, the neighbors. I think, I think we had a total of 10 mothers crying outside of my house. But that happened in March of 2012, and it's only gotten worse. So I really appreciate you taking the time with Chad and watching the speed on our streets. It's only gotten worse. Anything you can do is greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Martha? All right, folks, seeing none. We'll close public comment, council. Councilor Howard, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Erin, please tell Randy that after 10 years, he's my doctor. I've been hearing about it in doctor visits for a long time. So, and by the way, I mean, this, it kind of first came to us, I think, in March of 2015. Like, and we were on the council then. And at that time, there was a different scenario proposed, and we sent it back. And I think what we have here is a really robust, yet common sense approach. You know, I do think, it's really interesting, right? Psychologically speaking, what a difference even this painted median will make. I mean, yes, a stop sign, yes, yes, just all of it for me. But, you know, and then if people don't slow down, then we can look for wording that we could paint there. Slow downhill, you know. I drive this every single day, and I drive the correct speed limit usually slower. And it is really something, I mean, the fact that there isn't a stop sign there already is really something. So this does a lot for the safety and the walkability and also accessibility. When we have in here plans, future plans for accessible sidewalk onto Veterans Parkway. That's really important to me too, and on those crosswalks. We know that our traffic engineer won't propose things to the commission and to us lightly. Because, you know, you don't want, at the time, we were like, well, we don't want traffic to back up onto Sepulveda, right? So we didn't want to put a stop sign more closer to that area. So now, you know, you've got the painted median, perhaps a raised median, that starts to slow you down, but just back things up, right? I think it's a really, this is all really necessary. So I'll be voting yes on all of these items. I think it's really necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be making motions.
Councilor Paltona?
What's the motion?
The motion is to approve the Parking and Public Improvements Commission as well for stop signs in all direction, as well adopt Resolution Number 23-Dash-0091.
But then would that be bringing back those future items that cost more if it's a raised crosswalk?
I mean, well, I think it's, we wait six months.
So your motion does not include approval of those?
It does not include approval of those.
Perfect. Okay. Yes, I support this first round of changes. I'm going to reserve on the second round until we get more data back. There are a couple of things, and I want to say, you know, for all the traffic calming measures put around, especially the city of LA, unfortunately, their whole vision, zero and everything, has done the opposite. There are actually more injuries and deaths now because of some of the things that they've done because people try and get around these things. And I hate to also to give anyone a false sense of security, just like that bike path is, just like stop signs, just like crosswalks can be. They think there's this force field around them, and there's not. We've got an intersection well-known at this point from next door at Sixth and Valley where the photos are, there's clearly a stop sign there, but people just go right through it when they feel like it. And so enforcement is very much a part of this, not. And so enforcement is very much a part of this, not just traffic calming measures, but enforcement. We have to do a better job of that. I also think that we can, to Mayor Portman Franklin's point, there are signs, there's a sign with the flashing speed light, but also reduce speed, 30 miles an hour. That's from Vista del Mar, the transition from Vista del Mar onto Highland. And that, to me, is effective, certainly affects me. I drive this every day. I've got family who lives up that block of Pine right there, so I know what the situation is here. I support these measures and will vote for those. I don't know why we haven't done before that. 2015, I wasn't here, don't blame me. No, just kidding. Just kidding. It's a joke.
Were you here before then?
It's a joke.
Were you here before then?
Nobody came to us before that. So now's the time to fix things. I'm fine with the stop signs sometimes, but again, I don't want anyone to get that false sense of security. Make eye contact with those drivers when you cross that street, crosswalk or not. Some traffic engineers will tell you it's safer not to have even a crosswalk, because it forces you to be extra safe yourself and them as well. So please be safe regardless of what we put out there. And then, as we check the data and see how things come back, because again, there's a boomerang effect that if you put too much, then people ignore it because they're in their own little world and they're in a hurry. And again, comes back to enforcement, too. Three Es of traffic, right? Engineering, enforcement, and education. So we need to continue to do all those in this stretch of the highway and other stretches as well, obviously. Thank you.
Don't look at your phone when you're in a crosswalk?
No. Look up.
It's remarkable, right?
There are paintings on the sidewalks at crosswalks in many other cities saying, "Look up."
Franklin, you're up.
Also, like in London, it says, "Look left" for all of us that are looking for the traffic, going that way. So can't, you know, I can't overstate the importance of putting these traffic calming measures in. It's long overdue. The Green Belt acts as another natural corridor, you know, of kids, bicyclists pushing, you know, baby carts, baby carriages, everything. And so we want our residents to get there, and we want them to get there safely. And when you have cars even zooming by at 30 miles an hour because there's parked cars, it's very congested. So absolutely, I support the crosswalks. I like the idea of waiting six months before the raised ones. And then I think there was also an issue is that the raised crosswalks, we have to consider the CIP, right? And so there's a process there that takes some time. So just want to let you know that at the end of the six months, it can't immediately go to the raised crosswalks. But I think the crosswalks would be very helpful. No doubt, the stop sign at Pine, before this had a half a mile with one stop sign. Go back 25 years, and the same thing with Pine Avenue, where I live, between Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Marine, there's only one stop sign. And they were just, people were just flying through. We call it Little Sepulveda, because people knew that you could get away from Sepulveda, just stop at one stop sign, like at 17th Street, and go blasting through. So I believe it needs to be there, just to make the traffic aware. I realize there's going to be some extra noise that we discussed, but I think it's overbalanced by the safety measures there. The traffic, and I think we've all done it, we've said that we've all used North Valley, you know, coming southbound on Sepulveda. You know, another factor is that when you're coming southbound, coming out of El Segundo, and you're in the right lane anticipating to go there, there's those darn cars that turn into Chevron gas station, right? So you've got people that are frustrated by that, and then they're ready to zoom around that and then go to North Valley and zoom down North Valley. And that's why I think it's important that we address somehow the fact that they're, you know, that's why I like the landscape median or the median which is painted to begin with.
Recording in progress.
But also, but also the, something we can do about alerting about the hill, you know, speeds or whatever, just something there to make people aware by road striping and the like, something really obvious. Then advertising the changes. You know, Councilmember Napolitano mentioned that, education. I think there needs to be, you know, press releases. I think there needs to be schematics, you know, put in the paper so that drivers will be aware. It affects everybody. So many people, probably a third of the city, take that street, you know, when they're going to the downtown area, from the tree section, from East Manhattan, from the mall, things like that. So advertising that would be very, very important.
Recording in progress.
And I'm not sure if you're aware that due to one of the police department's initiatives, they assigned a dedicated traffic officer to neighborhoods within the city. I would highly encourage you to get in contact with the one. I was trying to look to see who it was. I didn't get to the, I didn't get the information in time. But find that police officer. Invite them to your homes. Invite them to your block parties. Invite them to your birthday parties for little two-year-old Ambers, you know, two-year-old when it becomes three. Get to know them and let them get to know you. I think that's really, really valuable for you. And then, of course, enforcement. We just have to put the same effort of enforcement there, like we've done at Sixon Valley. I'm not quite sure about the stop in the name of love, but at least we can do some additional enforcement measures there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Lesser, and I'll follow up and close.
I concur with my colleague's comments. It's not a matter of whether to do calming measures along the stretch and roads, it's just which measures and when. I lived close to that intersection that we're talking about for five and a half years. And in the 20 years almost since I lived there, the traffic's only gotten worse. It really was remarkable to see how conditions have changed for the worse when I came for a site visit. Quick comments. I've seconded the motion of Councilmember Hoeworth. I did want to reaffirm that I, too, have some concerns about raised crosswalks, and I look forward to that issue coming back. We're not approving that tonight. I like the idea that was suggested in passing of perhaps looking at the possibility of putting the line that's presently on the east side of the roadway on the west side. At a minimum, it might allow a little bit more room for the cars and their rearview mirrors. And that might be something that might have some efficacy. I'd be curious what would be involved when this item comes back in six months. I'd just be curious whether that is something that staff might support. It also, by the way, to the extent that people are using this as some form of extra protection for bicycling, more often they'll be heading west into town than going to a dead end right at Sepulveda Boulevard. So there might be some reasons for exploring that. I did want to encourage the police to consider putting some selective enforcement. I know they're limited in the number of motors that they have, but this might be an area where, in the interim, what can we do soon? What can we do quickly? Perhaps it might be some selective enforcement there, but I defer to the police department to do that. And then there was a reference in passing to a crosswalk or the absence of a crosswalk at 27th Street. When this item comes back, I would welcome some information about whether that would be feasible. I recognize there need perhaps be an alignment of perhaps cutting back some of the vegetation on the Veterans Parkway right at 27th. But that may well be a good spot for some form of crosswalk as part of these measures. But with that, I'm supporting the measure, and I'm seconding.
Well done. The mayor's job, folks, one of these he does, or he, she does, is not speak as much as everyone else here. But seriously, you listen to what your colleagues say. They don't want to repeat, I don't want to repeat what someone else has said. All good comments everybody makes here. But I just, I don't know if I talked to Chad or someone else about this. I don't agree that everyone speeding through the city is residents. I think a lot of the people that are speeding through are visitors. Whether you want to call it, blame it on post-COVID need to speed, or they want to get somewhere faster, whether they want to get to the nearest Starbucks, whatever it's going to be, there has been an increase all over the country, not just Manhattan Beach. We've all seen it. I don't believe LA traffic's problems are anywhere near or successful. And I told Garcetti to his face, I think Vision Zero, what do they call it, Vision Zero? Was zero vision. And I told him this right up the face. Nothing they talk about working in Sweden works at Manhattan Beach or the South Bay or LA at all. Nothing. We've seen, as Steve mentioned, the deaths of increased bicycle state, pedestrian state, they have all failed. So that's not the person I look to, to save us from traffic calming issues at all, period. And even Road Dice, talk about that. They've all been a complete failure. Taking that away from it, taking it all away from it, we control our own destiny here, and we look at things to do. And I think our partnership is not just between you and me, and all of us and you, it's police department, enforcing those stop signs. And I'll take the longer view and say that we're going to see Eric again in six months and say there hasn't been enough. And I think that even if we order, to Alan's point, we don't order the raised curb and the flashlights, and it shows up the next day. You have to order that. Then you get a public work schedule. All of a sudden, your six months becomes a year. So don't be sitting in your head thinking, six months and one day, they're going to increase these two items. It doesn't work that way. In my mind, I'd rather see them go through now and have them on hand, so that when we get to the point where we don't realize it's not working where we want it to be, they're ready to go. Because they were caught in that queue, and that queue's going to be all the way out here. But that being said, I mean, I love the part of it, and Stephen had a good point, too. I can tell you how many times my niece rides over there. I'm thinking to myself, they believe in the force field by watching Star Wars and Mandalorian. All of a sudden, the little line is a force field between reality and the car next to them. If I had a choice, I'd wipe all of that out and push those to the inside lane and run cars that are parking. Now, the residents won't like the car parking, but you can't, if safety is your goal, you should not have a car riding this close to someone riding a bike. I don't care how old you are. There's no excuse for this. So I wipe all of that out and push it to the inside corner, inside street. But this is a good first step. I agree with all my colleagues here. This is a good first step. Unfortunately, I don't believe it will be this last step. But it's a first step. Chad talked about it. It's a good first step. You'll start seeing some things change over time. People will learn where stop signs are, and she will have her enforcement out there to make sure people understand, you know, the importance of why you stop at stop signs. But here we go. It's a good first step. Let's go from there. Get it started, and we'll be back again in six months and now, see most of you again saying it's a great step, but we're not there yet. So with that, we'll do a roll call. Vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, just to be clear, it's six months after the installation?
Yes.
Not from today?
No, correct. Six months from when they actually go on the ground. We're going to see Eric again and most of you again.
Big step.
Yes. Step one is six months when they go on the ground, not today. Do we talk about when we expect this to go? I want to stop for a second. When do we say installation's going in so we're all clear about when it's actually going to happen? Do we know yet? Installation of the stop signs? Do we have an idea of projected date when they go on the ground? So that everybody can hear it all at the same time.
Thank you. A stop sign is a fairly easy request, and we can get a stop sign in after the resolution's passed. We have the signs in stock. It probably wouldn't take more than a month.
Fantastic. That's great news. Thank you, man. So no shipping delays on stop signs. That's great. Roll call. I'm sorry. But this time, we're all done. Joe, did you vote? We all voted? We all pushed our screens. There we go.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Have a good night. Thank Amber Forrest.
Yeah, don't disturb her now.
And thank Randy for you.
Yeah, tell my doctor it's good.
Thank you.
Dale, good seeing you.
Good seeing you all, too.
Can we take a five-minute break, you guys? And we'll come back with the last item. So we're going to break five minutes, folks, and come back. So we're going to break five minutes, hope to come back.
So first, the coyote observation data is broken down into two periods. One is kind of an annual breakdown, looking at it in comparison amounts from 2016 to 2023, and slight modification to the 2023 column that's actually January through May. And so, as you could see, that the data suggests that there's certainly an increase from 2016 to 2020, but we're slightly in line with 2022, maybe a slight increase from 2022 in terms of interactions or observations. And so, I do want to caution the city council in looking at this data, especially as relates to reported sightings. The city has definitely undertaken a public engagement campaign as relates to asking residents to report sightings, as well as asking residents to report them on the city's Go Reach application, and certainly a lot of promotion via hang tags, postcards, all that. And so, that observation data can be slightly, the reported sightings data could be slightly misleading because it doesn't account for duplications. That being said, the number does look like it's going to be increasing from the prior year and trending above. In terms of unconfirmed and confirmed predations, that number is pretty much in line. Martha, if you could scroll down, please. And so, this data focuses on the last two years when the city council has been addressing coyote observations pretty starkly. And so, you can see in 2022, that data broken down the same way on a monthly basis. And so, for 2023, we have data from January to May. Reported sightings is somewhat in line, unconfirmed predations are also somewhat in line with a slight uptick in May. And so, as of right now, the data suggests that while there is an increase, there could be an increased presence, there's no stark trajectory that indicates that there is a large increase from the prior year. And Martha, if you can show the map as well, please. And so additionally, what the city does in terms of looking at their data is that we have an observation data map. And so, it breaks it down into what place in the city these reported sightings, unconfirmed predations, and confirmed predations are occurring. As you can tell, there seems to be a slight concentration in the northeast quadrant of the city, near the Manhattan Village area, as well as the southern portion of the city, southeast as well. And that's somewhat in line with what our consultant had indicated is that there could be coyote packs that are coming from outside the city into those areas potentially. That being said, animal controls officers with the Manhattan Beach Police Officer continued to monitor, investigate, and educate the community on coyote activity. And so, I'll switch gears from here and kind of go into the contract that is up for city council consideration. So, consistent with what staff indicated in the prior report, an environmental analysis would need to occur prior to formal approval of the Coyote Management Response Plan. Staff solicited proposal from 19 qualified firms in accordance with CEQA. Staff provided one month for consultants and got a response from one firm, Michael Baker International, to provide the environmental consulting services. In this proposal, Michael Baker demonstrated clear understanding of the scope of work and provided the detailed methodology for competing, completing the requisite studies. Council will recognize Michael Baker International because they've done previous work with us, and currently, they're actually working on the Scout House project as well. And that being said, specific to Coyote Management Plan, Michael Baker has also worked with other wildlife management plans for other jurisdictions, including the city of Pasadena. So, that would conclude my presentation tonight. And if you have any questions, I'm available, obviously, as well as Community Development Director Tali Merzakanyan on the CEQA front. So that being said, staff recommends that the city council receive the update, adopt the resolution approving the agreement, as well as appropriate the necessary funds from the unreserved general fund balance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Horwath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just so everybody understands in the public, the $35,970 for the consultant is only for the environmental review that is required in order for us to proceed with the direction that council gave. So, you know, making sure that people understand, this is not going to implement any new methods of control or any, you know, this is, that is the next step that we have to take. Okay? So, that's number one. So, I have a question. I know that, obviously, we share borders with every other community, and do you, do the, do people from other cities speak to each other and say, here's where our coyotes are? And you guys share that information?
So, I know our Animal Control Division frequently interacts with the animal control. I don't know if they have divisions. I know they have one in Redondo Beach. I don't know if they have one in Hermosa off the top of my head, but we've had information sharing sessions, and in fact, hosted events so that Redondo and Hermosa could attend. Not only the consultant was here for an analysis on the, how to address coyotes, but the consultant, as well as the California Department of Fish and Wildlife was also here. So, I think there was at least two sessions where there was information sharing going on. And so, there is frequent interaction. Obviously, each city is a little bit different in terms of how they go about addressing their coyote management response and how they prioritize it.
And one reason I ask, and obviously, it's, it's a little further east on Rosecrans, but this past weekend, I did a test drive of a vehicle, and they said, go over to the Hobby Lobby, you know, parking lot. That's where we're going to go test it. But watch out for the kitties, the guy said. I'm like, what? He said, oh, yeah. And then we started seeing all these cats. So, some people have decided that's a really great place. There's a, you know, a hedge, and there's little cat crates in there, and little dishes, and there's all these cat, people are feeding them. And I know that it was, it was sort of the proof that you had said, like in the village or in other places, people go, you know, they make little homes for them, or they feed the feral cats. We're still going to continue that education no matter what happens, correct?
Correct, and we will take note of that cat, feral cat habitat that you've indicated.
I was really, you know, and then I started going off, and the guy's like, whoa, I shouldn't have said anything like that. That's right. Look for the coyotes. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lesser?
The Coyote Management Plan is not attached in staff report, but can you just summarize again, what steps first must be undertaken before trapping would even be considered upon completion of the environmental report, presuming there's no further amendments to the Coyote Management Plan?
In terms of what would elicit a trapping consideration? So, the Coyote Management Plan has an appendix that, in a colored tier, that distinguishes what kind of action a coyote has to undertake for the city to engage into a trapping behavior or trapping consideration. And so, the Coyote Management Plan indicates whether the factors include whether the coyote is acting in an aggressive way, whether there is an attractive, tractant present that elicits that behavior, if there is human behavior affecting that coyote's behavior as well. And so, depending on a variety of circumstances, a simple sighting does not indicate necessarily a trapping action. What would elicit trapping consideration, at the very least, is an aggressive coyote in a yard, and that there cannot be an attractant that is present. So, what we are trying to distinguish is between coyote behavior that is acting normal versus abnormal. And so, what we're hoping with that Coyote Management Response Plan draft that's, that council has considered, is that coyote behavior that is aggressive and that is abnormal, that is where a trapping consideration will be considered.
Consistent with what the council member Horwath just described, in terms of individuals not realizing that they're creating a food source and not trimming back hedges and such, which makes for nesting sites or den sites, excuse me, for coyotes, what is the next step planned by city staff or the ongoing efforts by city staff to up its game in terms of outreach to the community?
Yeah.
And follow up on these sites where, in fact, people are notwithstanding the outreach, still engaging in offering food and safe harbor?
Yeah. Staff in the past has taken some of a reactive response in terms of when there is a coyote sighting, or there is a report of a coyote, then they'll do investigative work as to what, what can be done to mitigate those coyote observations. Obviously, since 2022, July 2022, I think staff has taken a more aggressive role in terms of being a little bit more proactive on addressing our coyote response. On an ongoing basis, it's going to continue to occur, and that proactive response is obviously, whenever there is coyote sightings, talking to the neighborhood, talking to the neighborhood where that coyote observation occurred, placing a door tag or door hang tag, saying that there was a recent coyote observation. And especially when there is unconfirmed predations, our animal controls officers do a phenomenal job of investigating what was the cause of it, wherever investigative lead can lead to. And so, they're, you know, down to the detail of, you know, contacting a local veterinarian and getting an analysis on, you know, how could this have occurred? Could this, could it have occurred via blunt trauma via a vehicle? Could this have occurred via coyote, you know, biting into it? Whatever it may occur, our animal controls officers definitely do a detailed job in terms of investigating and trying to be as proactive as possible.
Thank you.
George, two questions. People have never seen this before. Is the Coyote Management Plan on our website?
It is.
Okay, nothing changed there. Could you go back to the slide where we talked year-over-year comparison coyote sightings versus 22 versus 23, please?
The key numbers jump out at me. Look at the difference. Does that, don't they go back to the year data? It should be one more slide.
Yes, right up there.
There we go. The numbers have dropped almost in half, a little bit over half. So, this, we haven't gone to the middle of, you know, we're in July, driest part, maybe August. So, it's good, whether that's because we're not repeating dual sightings, which is frequent, or two, the coyotes have moved on to better grounds. And we're not taking away, as Counselor Horwath mentioned, we've gotten away from the feeding the wild feral cats at MB Villas and everybody else that we've seen for years to go away, maybe the combination of them. But I'm also leery of pushing out there that we constantly have a coyote problem. If you look at the numbers, if we're going to look at the data, that's not true compared to what it was last year or year-to-year comparison. Education's great, but if people take their food away, don't put it out, as Amy mentioned out there, feeding every stray cat that goes by. And we're not, we have to be a hedged number in there for dual reporting. It might be lower than what reports to us. So, yes, we're careful about it. We have a plan in place. It's on the website, so we can report it out to the newspaper and put it out in the media, but I'm also leery of the second step happening that, man's pushing it out there so much, there was a bigger problem than what it really is. We hear the numbers. And you're assuming everybody reports, but I also count that there's dual reporting. But I like the educational part of it. I think it's key, and I'm obviously in favor of the plan. If we need to get there, by the way the numbers are going, that's not our issue yet. And I'm knocking on wood when I say that. I hope it stays that way.
Does Lhasa do the coyote cams too?
I'm not going to go there. But that's all I have. Let me open up any public comment here. Want to talk about this item? How about Amy on Zoom, Martha? Oh, please.
I wasn't going to comment, but I-
Please, why not? You've got the whole choice to yourself.
It's pretty quiet in here now.
So, my name is Shawna Siney, and I'm a long-term resident here. Know Steve from high school. Welcome, everybody. Nice to meet all of you in person.
You too.
Just in my neighborhood last week, we had two cats killed by a coyote. And I think there's some hesitancy for people reporting because I think that there's some people who feel that it will lead to culling of the coyotes, and they're animal lovers. And so, I think we need to kind of maybe think about that. I also think if you read next door, some of the comments of these people who've lost their pets is heartbreaking. I am not sure that, that what we're saying about not remove, like, well, when I read some of the information out there, the coyote behavior becomes more aggressive, more aggressive, more aggressive. And that's from Cal State Pets Control. And so, my concern, I'm sorry, nervous to talk. But my concern is that we're seeing so many cats killed, whether they're being reported or not. It's common knowledge in the neighborhoods. People are talking about it. The reporting is, the new reporting has just come up. I think that's new for the animal control reporting. I think we need to be more aggressive than what we're doing, whether it's culling them, whether it's educating, whether it's taking a look at what land are we taking away from the coyotes? There's a whole host of things that are going on. I can tell you this, we never had this problem before. This is a new problem. So, something has changed in our neighborhoods. I don't know that it's necessarily feeding feral cats because that's been going on forever. We have a lot of cat lovers, a lot of small pet lovers. The fact that we've seen them on Pacific Playground, the next thing is, according to Cal State, is that the coyote behavior becomes more aggressive, and it next could be a small child. We have a lot more small children in our neighborhoods than we have had in the last 20 years. And I think it's important that we get aggressive.
Thank you. Let me ask you, before you go, one question. The cats you mentioned, they don't report them. Are these feral cats or house-trained?
No, they're house cats. One name was Dexter, beautiful cat. One was a black cat at the corner, two houses up. I have three cats. I've now brought them inside. I've never had to bring my cats inside. I mean, I bring them inside at night, always. But during the day, I'm worried about them even being in my backyard during the day.
Right. Yeah, please tell all your neighbors to talk to this. I don't read next door. But if I did, I would tell people to, we need to know, we need to find out, and we need to find out accurate numbers. We can't be guessing. Need to know. But this puts a plan in place.
Yeah, and these numbers are for half a year.
Right.
We just went through pupping season. We're now just going into the summer when we have young adolescent pups. So, you know, they're low right now, but it's only, it's not even a half a year. It's just a half a year at this point.
Right. We're going to keep watching. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I'd be nervous to talk.
You did a great job. We can ask you stories about Steve later.
Yeah.
Thank you. Pay you money or something?
Well, I'm buying you a drink.
Come on, Shawna.
Anyone else here? How about on Zoom, Martha?
Pass that hearts.
No. All right, opposed public comment, council. I have a first, Councilor Palatano, and a second by Mayor Breton Franklin. No other comments. We'll do a-
Your honor, I'm not, I made the motion. I'm not going to belabor this. This is just another step in the steps that we already approved. We know we need to do the environmental to be able to trap and become more aggressive in dealing with these. If we, and, you know, the Coyote Management Plan is what it is right now, and that can be changed, but this has to be in there to be able to do anything. So, that's my motion to receive the update, adopt resolution number 23-0093, and appropriate the funds. Thank you.
Now, we have two questions. Counselor Lesser, Counselor Horwath?
Just brief comments, because they were on the verge of a vote, and that is simply that I will be supporting the motion. However, I want to ensure that staff does all of what was recommended by its outside advisor that I know some have questioned, that at a minimum, we are proactive in seeking to educate the community about removing food sources as well as habitat, and really being vigilant on that and retain this as a last resort. But we have it. We have this tool so that we can, just as the speaker just indicated, so that we can get more aggressive, and we have the tools with which to address it.
Counselor Horwath?
Yeah, just really quickly, I wanted to show the speaker that I'm all for aggressive. Just because I mentioned the feral cats, I'm all for the aggressive plan. I voted for it before, so, yeah.
I would just add from, we need to hear from people, actual stories, real events. We can't be guessing on information out there. We'll call, I'm sorry. Vote, please.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, everybody. Next item up, item L, City Council Request or Reports, AB 1244 reports. No one went anywhere. Joe, did you go anywhere? No, you're good? All right, there's nothing to report there, and let's see. Next up, item 16, Consider Request by Mayor Breton Franklin, Counselor Lesser to Discuss the Logos on Police Vehicles. City Manager, Mel?
We are looking for the third vote if you want us to proceed.
Counselor Horwath, is your third?
All right, this will come to a future agenda.
All right. Number 17, Consider Request by Councilmembers Lesser and Horwath to Discuss Trademarking in the Manhattan Beach Pier.
I'd like to withdraw this request. I put this on the agenda, the request of a resident. I've, in the interim, done my own legal research and spoken with the city attorney. I don't think it's worth spending more staff time on this matter.
Okay.
Counselor Horwath, you good with that?
Sure.
So, remove item 17 for future consideration.
So, I can put the pier on a shirt?
Anywhere you want.
Good, excellent.
That's the item-
Side of a building.
Item, item and futures end items. Anyone have any future? Counselor Lesser?
I do. I'd like to turn what has been presented by some as a negative and turn it into a positive, and that is, I'd like to place on the council agenda a discussion and welcome the community to discuss how we as a city might celebrate the Fourth of July and Memorial Day. So, I'd like a second vote. I've consulted with city staff, and this would be an appropriate way to do that.
I'd do it.
So, I'd do it. I was going to do this myself. I guess I would add to that, though. I'd like to kick it back to, for instance, the Parks and Rec Commission as part of the discussion, because Juneteenth should be in there too, right? Everyone's saying, oh, you're going to celebrate that. But no, the thing is, you know, I'm driving down Manhattan Beach Boulevard. We've had flags out there before on Fourth of July.
Exactly.
We haven't had that. And so, what I'd really like to do is, I'm not trying to belabor this either, but we need to have a, first of all, decide what we want to do, then have a checklist of these things that we do on a yearly basis, because these are supposed to be traditions. Traditions are supposed to live beyond whoever the director is of the department, whoever council is, whatever staff is, and we do it on a yearly basis, and we should know this, but we used to put flags out. We don't anymore. Things are getting lost, you know? And then even, like we said, you know, check to make sure that the lights are working before we build up an expectation. We just need to have a checklist of these things. I'd like the discussion to be had at the commission level, but then, I'm a believer in checklist, create a checklist. This is what we're going to do for Fourth of July. We're going to put up flags. We're going to do this. We're going to do that. Memorial Day, Veterans Day, whatever it is. Go through the list of, I mean, we've got the 9/11, I think we do it every five or 10 years now, the recognition. We need to put this down on paper and have it outlive whoever's anywhere at any particular time.
So, this is my intent, and I want to be careful not to talk too much about this item, but that's precisely why I propose it, and the only question I have, city manager and I have spoken back and forth, is this something which staff would welcome coupled with the Juneteenth discussion or as a separate standalone?
I think it's best if it is combined. It would give us an opportunity to do it holistically.
Lay out the year. Counselor Horwath?
And I might throw into it with, you know, consent, and, you know, whoever's the second vote, whatever, but, because I've been thinking, similar to a checklist, you know, sometimes these months, you know, the special months come up, and we're, we put something on the ceremonial, like celebrate American, you know, API Month, but not, you know, American Jewish History Month or whatever like that. It's, it's not as important as those holidays. It is not as important, but it would be nice to have, so we're not caught unawares, and it's just rote, and we just do it. It's, is it-
Those generally come from other groups, though. They make requests of us. I don't have a list, you know, a running list of everything for every month.
I understand, but I have also been in, in conversations where someone says, well, I just don't want to do that. You know, like the mayor will, groups will come, and not you, Mr. Mayor Montgomery, but the mayor will say, no, that's, we're not going to put that on ceremonial. That's not important. And so, I, I think that could be a subset of it. It's not as important, but so, I would welcome that, just, you know, then we know.
I would do that through, I would make that separate than the holidays.
All right, I'm good with that. I'll do that later.
I would make that as, as, you know, mayor's or city manager or something like-
I'll make a motion later at a different time, because I think it would be different than what you're suggesting, but let's do this now.
Right, and I just want to concur. I want to prioritize these three holidays, particularly Independence Day, Memorial Day, and then now we're doing-
Well, I think, look at the entire year, though, because we still, you know, there's, there's things we do now that we can still do other things for, but I would do that in the sense, do we need to have a third? Can we just give direction to council?
Can give direction to the, which commission?
Parks and Rec.
Yeah, Parks and Rec, because there'll be a public hearing before Parks and Rec, and we'll come back to the council.
It'll probably bleed into Public Works in some of it, too.
Will we go there? Just a general question. When was the last time the city, the city, not the Realtors, sorry, Joe, put out flags for July 4th? Anybody know?
It was about two or three years ago.
I'm not, not, I'm talking-
Like on the poles, like, yeah.
Bun teen, flags. Anybody have an idea when that was?
I don't, and I've asked Eric to look into-
Couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Just a couple of years ago.
Probably pre-COVID.
I suspect that's what, what it was, but we're looking into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we have a proposal by Counselor Lesser, a second by Counselor Horwath, and third by Counselor Palatano. You do three?
You're good. All right.
Because they could go to Parks and Rec.
Once again, because there'll be public hearings on this.
Yes, Parks and Rec needs to be in the step-by-step.
Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Veterans Day, and Labor Day.
Yeah, there you go.
Parks and Rec needs to be involved in the step from day one.
Okay, one, two, three.
That way, we'll go back to-
Thanksgiving, anybody?
Whatever we used to do.
Arbor Day?
St. Patrick's Day?
Flag Day.
All.
Come on, flag day.
Flag Day.
No, I'm good.
That's what I mean, but that's, these are the considerations. I don't, I don't want to limit the commission. I seriously, a year, there's, there's lots of things, right? There's a movie for Groundhog Day. We don't do anything for it.
Can I say one last thing on timing? Is, I want to make sure that this is done in an expeditious way to make sure that there's enough timing and preparation, if there's budget required, that we have funds available to pay for. That's it.
Every major holiday, should we look at? Leave it alone at that.
And it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be grand for every, but good golly, flags.
We know what the holidays are. It's on a calendar. Anyone else? Another?
How about Steve and Palatano did some stories?
I will not support that.
I had one myself.
And Palatano, you're up.
Your honor, thank you.
You can take me off.
I would like to have, put on the agenda, a request to make of our local legislators, our assembly member and our state senator, to seek a change in the law that would allow cities to prosecute state misdemeanors when a county district attorney decides not to. I've got some proposed language I can bring forward, but I'd like to agendize it for future discussion and for letters to be sent.
I think you have 5-0 on that one.
Cause of two, okay.
All right, Counselor Horwath, you're still up.
Does that mean it's coming back for a third, or we don't need a third? We do need a third, okay.
I don't need to speak, Mr. Mayor. I'm good.
You're good? Anyone else have any future items? You're good? All right, we'll move on to city manager reports.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City attorney report.
Nothing tonight.
All right, nothing informational. Folks, I, this is the sad part of the council meeting. We have a journey and a memory, and most of you, I know the PD has, but most of us actually served with or met with and knew him, Officer Ruiz. I mean, one of the most fun, sense of humor people I, I'm just going to read something before I read on his passing. I wanted to tell you what he calls himself on the, I'm going to rise here in a second. But if you knew him, he labels himself, these are his own words on the passing of retired Officer Ruiz. He called himself Senior Zookeeper, Humanities Mentor, Instructor, Keeper of the Peace. Knowing that, before you deal with everybody with a smile on their face, I want to take